We will have a work session that will start at two o'clock and go through four o'clock. That, of course, is open. And then, at four o'clock, we will go into our closed session. And then, we will return to the dais for our seven o'clock business meeting. So, without further ado, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Carol and Dr. Ferry joining us today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here again. I'll start with this. When we did the stakeholders' meetings, I heard a lot of great comments about this area. And one of the comments I heard was, "We have great weather, it's never cold, and it never snows." And I've seen both. I've seen both since we've been here, so...
That was a theme.
So, anyway, but I found that interesting when I flew in, got here last night, and there were snowflakes. I thought, "That's interesting, it never snows here," right? So, but we do appreciate the opportunity to be back with you, and we've been working since we last visited here. Our last visit here was outstanding in meeting with all the groups, all the organizations, all the individuals that we met with to talk. And I'll talk more about that in just a few minutes. But let me talk about some preliminary information to begin with. As we started this process, we talked about advertising. How would we advertise? How would we let individuals know about this search? And so, Dr. Ferry and I have sent out emails with personal invitations to over 200 superintendents across the nation. He has a Rolodex, I have a Rolodex, and we, to those individuals that we know personally that we sent out and said, "Norfolk is open, we'd love for you to consider applying," or if you know of someone else who might consider applying. So, we did that. We also sent out invitations to all the individuals who are in the Mac and Jake database, individuals who aspire to be superintendents, or maybe are current superintendents. We keep them in a database, and we send that information to them as well. We listed on Top School's jobs, we advertised, and then we had 265 hits on that particular site. And with the AASA posting on website, we had 243 hits on that site. And then, the ad was placed in Education Week, which thousands of educators read Education Week nationwide, and there's no way to speculate how many actually saw the ad or read the ad, but it was there as well. So, as of, I guess, yesterday, and the deadline to apply for this position is tomorrow at midnight, as of yesterday, we had only 10 people who had completely completed their application. But I will say this, and Dr. Ferry and I have discussed this, we believe there are some really quality applications in those 10. There are also 23 who've started an application, and they've not completed it. And I've spoken with at least four people this week who have said to me that they have started the application, and they intend to submit it by tomorrow. It's an interesting thing with educators, especially with superintendent's positions. Sometimes, they feel that they need to wait to the deadline, or they have so many things going on in their life that they put that on the back burner until they're pushed to get that done, and so they apply. My guess is, we'll have many applications to roll in tomorrow, and we can keep you informed of that as well. So, with that said, any questions on that, where we are with that? I know 10 sounds like a small number, but again, I want to repeat, I think more will apply, and I think already within the 10, there's some really quality applications within the 10. Okay? No questions on that?
Generally, a lot of the applications come in right at the last minute.
Yeah. Eleven o'clock tomorrow night, so...
Is there an average you can give us to compare that to for a district like ours that we should have expected?
You know, I would have probably guessed we would have had between 15 and 20, would be my guess for a district of this size. We've had districts where there's been more, but quite honestly, sometimes we get 50 applications, and 30 of them don't even, you know, really qualify because they've, in your case, may have never been a principal, or never been a superintendent. We've had classroom teachers, which that's fine, that they want to apply, that's fine. But when it comes down to it, they're probably not really qualified. We've had people who are non, I guess we'd call them non-traditional candidates who apply, who are in a different state, a different country, or whatever, to apply. And so, those numbers, even though I might say 50, those are generally not actual legitimate candidates for the position. So, I would say the 10 that we have right now are all legitimate candidates for the position.
So, based on the criteria that yours explaining, do you think, could you say, maybe, there's something that we would reconsider as far as superintendent experience, or years of experience, or, I don't know, just any of those?
I only know of one that I spoke with who called me and asked how, about the principal experience. He had actually come on a different route. He was a classroom teacher, assistant principal, and then was moved to the central office in a position, and was elevated through the central office to director, assistant superintendent, and superintendent. And he asked, he called me and asked, he said, "How adamant are they that you have principal?" He said, "I've never been a principal," although he's been a very successful superintendent in a relatively large district, and has been, is great. But I said, "I can't answer that for you, I can just tell you what they said." And I said, "I think they've had some, maybe had an issue or two in the past with someone who had not been a principal, so that's why they wanted in there." I said, "You could go ahead and apply if you choose to do so, and then they can make that determination." But I said, "They did set that forth in the qualifications." So, I tried to encourage him to apply, although I didn't know how this board would feel about someone who, even if they're successful as a superintendent, if they've never been a principal, so...
And also, I wouldn't be overly concerned at this point, because I do think there's going to be many more that'll complete the application by the deadline Thursday night. And I 100% agree with Barry. You could have a large, shallow pool, but it's much better to have a quality pool that 's got depth.
Ms. Pessine?
I was just going to share that during the last superintendent search, and Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Jordan can, second, we had about between 30 and 40, and I know we had a lot more interested, but were concerned about the confidentiality piece in the past. So, just to give a frame of reference of what the number was at the last search. My other question is, so can you remind me, did we say preferred for principal experience? I thought, I thought we did.
Well, I can tell you, no, we said required. I think it says required.
Requirement.
It says requirement.
I remember we had that discussion, but, all right.
Superintendent experience preferred in an urban district with similar size, and then it goes on to say experience as a requirement of experience as a building principal.
Right. I'm not looking at it. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, with that said, we had several agenda items that, just on our agenda, not necessarily on yours, that we need to cover today, which include, first of all, review the stakeholders' input, and provide you with a copy of the stakeholder report. Let me just say, and I'll speak for Dr. Ferry and myself, that those three days were exhausting, but they were very insightful. And the individuals that we spoke with, that we listened to, we heard what they had to say about your district and your city, and they were great. I think all of the individuals who attended those meetings had a caring heart for the city and for the school district. They want to see this school district succeed, but they all have concerns that they expressed, and we'll share some of those with you as well. So, we met with the stakeholders for three days on October, if you recall, most of you were involved in that, October 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. We had 12 meetings scheduled, actually ended up 13 meetings, because the student meetings, there was a transportation issue, and one group didn't get there on time. And so, we met with the first group, and then, when the second group came in, we met with them individually. So, we ended up meeting with two different student groups, although it's basically one group. The first day, on Monday, October 21st, we're at Booker T. Washington High School. We met, first of all, with the central office staff, secondly, with the elementary teachers and school staff, and third, we had a community meeting there as well. We had, all total, on the three days, over 200 people that attended those stakeholders' meetings. Some of the meetings were heavily attended, and some were not quite as heavily attended, but we had individuals, or groups of individuals, at every one of those. On Tuesday, October 22nd, Norview High School, we met with the secondary principals, was our fourth group, our fifth group, were the elementary principals, and our sixth group, which ended up being two groups, were the students. Then, we met with the secondary teachers and staff, and then, we met with the PTA and civic lead presidents. And the last meeting that night at Norview was with community members as well. And then, on Wednesday, the 23rd, we're at Slover Library, which, by the way, is absolutely amazing. Group 10 were the city business, community, and philanthropic and faith leaders, and the group 11 was the same, just at a different time for those who couldn't make the first meeting. And then, the last group was a community meeting at Larchmont Elementary School. Again, we had over 200 people combined in all of those meetings, and we generally took a head count, and took a note, and added those up at the end, but over 200 people who were, who attended those meetings. We asked those same four questions that you've heard, and you know we ask, and those questions were, "What is good about your community?" was the first question. "What's good about your school district?" That was another question. The third question is, "What are the issues a superintendent, our new superintendent, needs to know about when coming to the district, when they arrive on the job? What, they need to know what they're going to face? What are those issues?" And then, the fourth one is, "What characteristics or qualities should the superintendent possess in order to be successful here in Norfolk?" So, those were the four questions we asked the 200 people, and we have the input, stakeholder input report, for you. Ralph, you'll give everyone a copy of that. We will provide that with you. We're going to run through that quickly this morning for you. I want to remind you that Dr. Ferry and I didn't write these responses. We recorded these responses. Maybe I should say, if there's anything that was said by individuals that's hurtful, or steps on your toes, or just remember, we're the messenger. We're just telling you what was said to us.
Don't shoot us.
Don't shoot, that's right, don't shoot the messenger.
Dr. Carol, before you continue, I just, I forgot to mention early on, I do have to step out for another engagement, so for a period of time, and Mr. Clanton will take care of the meeting, and then I'll return.
Sure, that's not a problem. And I also want to say, in looking, I hope this is appropriate, I know we talked about how much time, and we said, I think, four, four and a half hours, and you've scheduled that. I really don't know how long this is going to take. It may not take that long, so it's according to how things go, and how much discussion we have as to how long all of these five items will take. So, we'll move forward with that. So, if you'll open to page one of the document, and I know you're going to be really excited about reading, so I would ask you, if you possibly could, to just kind of follow along with us as we talk, instead of jumping ahead to see if you find your name in there anywhere, because you will not. We didn't use names.
Yes.
Your book.
There's my picture, yeah, exactly. So, we'll start with, again, the executive summary just basically tells you what we're doing and what we've done. If you'll look in the second paragraph, it says, "The executive summary of these major themes expressed by participants," that these sessions are listed here. And then, we see those from groups and individuals, and the response to those four questions, which I've already said. And then, the final section of this report will consist of, there were 144 English responses and one Spanish response to the survey that was online on your website where individuals could go if they did not have the opportunity to attend a meeting, they could still give input. So, all of that information is listed in the back. But on page one, let's look at the common themes, and I know you can read, and I don't want to bore you, but I may want to make a comment or two as we walk through some of these. And the first question is, "What are the good things about Norfolk and your community?" And this is what they said. "Strong relationships with community businesses and partnerships, even with the military. Strong emphasis on the arts, museums, and art centers. Diversity," that continued to come up in all the meetings. Everybody felt like diversity in this community was such a strength of this community. "Ample opportunity for employment. New and ample housing in the city with significant redevelopment in the community." That continued to come up, the redevelopment that's going on here, and what a positive thing that is, and has been, and will hopefully continue to be. "Good culture, including concert venues, great selection of restaurants, and entertainment. Transportation," and these, again, these were not just said once, these were the things that were said over and over and over again. "Transportation, such as Amtrak and the light rail, Greyhound bus terminal, cruise ship terminal, and a great airport," which I agree with that. Those were positives about this community. The NATO headquarters for North America's here. Here's the one, "Good weather." All the seasons. When I got off the plane last night, I went, "What happened to the good weather?" But, no, it is beautiful here.
But we were at least glad you made it in. We were a little concerned that your planes might not make it in, what the weather was.
Mine came in about the time the weather was hitting, so we landed sideways, but we're okay. Beaches, the beaches here, and near other beaches, great hotels, which I can attest to. College and universities, such as Norfolk State, Old Dominion, Virginia Westland, and there were others that were mentioned. A great hospital center, the medical community, it seems to be very strong. Everybody's really impressed, especially a couple specifics that were mentioned several times, was the Heart Center and Children's Hospital. The military, again, being the largest naval base in the world, was, continued to be mentioned. Excellent police department that works well with the community and the schools. A city that is rich in history. I think that's an understatement. We continued, I think in every meeting, we would hear that about the history, the rich history of the city. Acceptable cost of living, excellent opportunities for faith-based worship, proximity to the mountains. There were a couple of specific ones that I won't mention there, it has someone's name on it. A mayor that is involved with the community. The city has a zoo, botanical gardens, and aquarium as well. The USS Wisconsin is here, Norfolk. Southern Railroad, Norfolk, this is a direct quote, "Norfolk is a big, small town." So, it has all the, everything you could look for in a large city, but it's a small, smaller town. It's the center of Hampton Roads region, and is rated one of the friendliest, and I like this, my wife wanted to come after hearing this, "Most romantic cities in the nation." So, that's what we were told, and those were the things that we heard. And again, those are themes, and in the back, as, not right now, but in the back, as you read through the comments, you'll see those themes as well that people mentioned. There may be a thing or two, or a comment or two along the way that we didn't include in the themes, please understand that, but you'll be able to read those when you read through those comments. So, Ralph is going to take us through, what are the good things about the public schools here?
Yes, I'd like to echo what Barry said in terms of how passionate people are that we met with, in terms of their desire to see the school district continue to move forward and be an outstanding organization. And that was across the board. And having the opportunity to listen to the things that they talked about in terms of the positive aspects of the school district. They talked about resiliency in terms of some of the turnover, even among the teaching staff, and we'll get to that in terms of the challenges. Dedicated, hardworking, phenomenal teachers, and this came from, I usually, my barometer is usually the students, and when we had the opportunity to meet with those students across from all the high schools, they actually validated what we heard from the other groups, which is really positive. So, a lot of this came from the students, that there's also a lot of innovation, risk-taking, willingness to change, look at best practices. Teachers demonstrate the ability to meet the needs of economically disadvantaged students, a safe environment, the child nutrition program, a central focus on students, strong professional development, which they had mentioned as being very, very strong in terms of teacher induction, and the first few years of the training, but that then becomes a challenge later on that Barry will review. They talked about the athletic program being strong, the diversity in programs in the middle schools and high schools, academics, the IB program, the specialty programs, the ROTC, career in technol, foreign languages, dual enrollment, STEM, the music programs. The utilization of volunteers, the district has many award winners across the district. Special education students get the resources needed, the science fair, robotics. They did mention as strength of the district an elected school board, YMCA, college courses through AP, again, dual enrollment, the capstone program, teachers working in the area of data analysis, dedicated principals, tight-knit group of administrators. They mentioned the technology is being strong, students that are passionate about learning. And again, I want to emphasize, the time we spent with the students, it was quite evident in terms of where their focus is, and how they feel committed to the district. After-school assistance. Was curious, the conversation we had about the rivalry between the high schools, that is competitive, but the students said it's, as it's competitive, it's also balanced in terms of, and that came from them. Their access to counseling, the school resource program, resource officer program, ESL program, the partnership with the medical schools, leadership course offerings, governor's school of the arts, the nurses, teachers think globally, PTAs and strong council PTAs, program to help administrators become better leaders, other foundations and grants, media relationships that the schools have with the media, the Slover Library, and again, the focus on how awesome the students are, and safe, school-focused. One of the things also stranded through all this as well, in terms of the strength of the district, is, and this came up as well, and you'll see it, is diversity. The students said that the diversity of the district is a strength to them, and a positive aspect of the school district, as did the staff. So, that's something that really should be emphasized and built upon in terms of, as a district moves forward. It's a strength. Any questions on any of that?
Yes, general question. The, did you all do any type of profile of the people who responded and attended? 50% were, have students in the building, 40% were women, any type of?
We did not. We didn't collect any demographic information from them at all. That's a good question.
I wondered the same thing. I said, "I wondered the same thing." Some may, you know, we hear some of these things, you know, on an ongoing basis, but oftentimes, it's for a particular group of students.
If I could respond quantitatively, I mean qualitatively to that question, from observing, I think when we met with the students, there was an excellent cross-section of students who were, who we would consider, you know, honor students, IB students, but also students of a variety of backgrounds, and not only demographics, but, you know, the programs they're in. So, that's what I saw in terms of students. In terms of some of the other groups, I saw there were some people there that had had students gone through the district, that did not have students in the district, and there were some parents with, that actually attended with their students in some of the settings as well. But to pinpoint exactly what percentage of those, that's a good question.
I do think that it helps us, as we get into this, that we created sessions for
different groups of people. It didn't give us the exact demographics that Mr. Jordan might be looking for, like whether they're female or what, but at least it told us what their background was. That's why we set it up to separate and have elementary principals, teachers and elementary principals at different sessions than the secondary, because the issues can be very different in those two levels. And while we brought in different groups, and then we just opened it to the community too, but I think that'll at least give us a little bit of an idea of what people in different groups were thinking, is when we go into the session part that says, "Well, these were elementary principals sitting here, and this is how they felt." I'm kind of interested to see what the difference is between what the elementary principals had to say and the secondary, and the elementary teachers and staffs had to say, and the secondary teachers. I think that's, at least doing it that way, yeah, that's what I said. And that was the whole point of setting up those meetings with particular groups under, you know, your recommendation. And I think, and I'm really anxious to see how those differences start playing out as we go through this.
Yeah, so in the survey, are we going to, are the survey results in here too?
Yes.
Okay. So, that, I believe, you did capture whether they were a parent, you know, at least to get more of that. Still not, where are you a parent, which I think is important as we think about how these strengths and weaknesses play out.
I think that's a good point, what neighborhood you're in probably might influence it some.
Or, you know, if your child, if you're a parent, you know, where does your child go to school?
We've never been asked, at least I've never been asked to capture that data in advance. I'm not saying it's not something we couldn't do, it would probably be good. If you want statistical analysis on that, that would probably cost a little bit more. We'd have to, you know, have to run some data on that, so...
Yeah, and I just have a general question. So, in developing, are these the standard four questions you typically use in your community stakeholder meetings? Okay, so this is, okay, all right.
We did it in all 12 or 13 of these meetings, and these are the same typical questions we normally ask. Generally, those four questions arrive at the majority of the answers, and if somebody has, quite honestly, a burning question or a burning comment that they want to make, we don't say, "Well, that doesn't fit in the four questions." We allow them to make their comment as well. The hardest thing, the hardest thing is to keep them focused on the question. Sometimes, they want to drift over into other areas, like, "Well, that's a number four." Number one is, "What's the good things?" Well, I like a superintendent who is this or that. Well, that actually goes with number four, that's not number one. So, you know, the hardest thing that Dr. Ferry and I would do is try to redirect them and keep them on task, and keep them on the question, and keep us moving forward within the timeframe that was given, so...
Good, thank you.
And just to follow up, I was just trying to get a sense of how you felt the, those that attended kind of reflected. You mentioned diversity a lot. So, a lot of times, people, when they think diversity, they'll talk about racial diversity, but not necessarily all other types of diversity. So, you know, our city may be 50% renters, but we don't, it's not necessarily the case that when we do certain focus groups, that we may see that perspective at the table. Or, the median age in the city might be 33 years old, and you have a community meeting, and folks may be twice that. So, I was just trying to get a sense of, just from your observation, to the extent that we have, you know, our student population, our city population and demographics, did you have any feel for whether or not those who were attending the groups kind of reflected, you know, our student population, or reflected our city?
I would say that, and in the conversations, people would identify themselves, sometime even identify where they worked, or who they were, where they lived, all of those things. And honestly, I never thought, "Wow, this is overboard on one side or the other." I felt like it was a great cross-section. I think we had, those who had higher education were involved. I think those who did not have higher education were involved. Those who had graduated from this district were involved. I think those who had not graduated from this district, yet had children in this district, were involved. So, I, just from my perspective, Dr. Ferry may have a different perspective, but I did pay attention to that of who's speaking, who's in the audience, what are they saying, what's their background, based on what, we don't ask them that, but if they volunteer that information. I felt like it was a great cross-section of the city.
Thank you.
I was also impressed with the fact that people shared with us as to whether they were born, raised, and stayed in Norfolk, and of other folks who had migrated here and moved here, and from their perspective in terms of the all aspects of the city and the school district. I believe from what I saw, there was a very good representation in terms of the demographics of the community, the diversity of the community, because we had folks who, you know, and I agree, diversity is not just race, it's special needs, it's, it's a variety of categories, as we know, and we heard a lot of that. But, that, that was very impressive in terms of what I saw. From my perspective as well, I, I had a great history lesson through all of those conversations with folks. Some people who were in school here way back in the sixties, who shared, and, and one of the things I've learned is that that stuff, and I know Barry will get to that under question three, it's something that really has to be paid closely attention to whoever the next superintendent is, that history and understanding it. And, and then one other comment, human nature in these kinds of sessions generally is people always wanted to write, go to question number three. That's human nature, people usually who are going to give up their time to come out to meetings, right? To share their, what they think should be process and so on, they want to go to number three. What are the challenges, right? And we really had to migrate through a lot of that and get them focused on each of these categories first, and, and then get to question number three.
So, would you say that, just in everything that we kind of heard here, that there was some type of common denominator in the respect that, except for maybe the students, who were, they were in school that day and they were maybe selected to get on a bus, that everyone else that came there had some type of vested interest or commitment? Because no one was forcing you to be there, you had to come out on your own at that particular time. So, I think there's some common denominator in that respect that, what, whatever it may be, you had some type of vested interest that brought you to that meeting and share.
As well as a group that kind of followed us through many of the meetings.
Yeah, there were several individuals who came to all the community meetings, which was fine. We invited them, got to know them pretty well. In a positive way, you know, I think first night they were skeptical, and by the third night, or third day, they were friends, and we're emailing, you know.
We actually had the opportunity to get to know them well and, and to understand that, and again, they were there for the purpose of, they want to see the school district be successful.
Right, well, move to question three, which Ralph has already said is generally the question that everybody really wants to focus on is how do you fix the problems? And that's not the question, the question is what are the most significant issues the next superintendent will face as he or she comes into the district? Let me just say, pick your feet up off the ground, off the floor, because if you don't, you might get your toes stepped on. This is the area where people go into, for lack of a better term, a, a critical mode, an attack mode, a let me tell you how to do it mode, and we listened to that, we didn't stop anyone. Now, they didn't, I'll, I'll say this, we prefaced it with, you know, we're not going to call names, we're not going to call people out and that kind of thing, this is general discussion, and they respected that protocol very well, and it, and I think it went well. The, the one that we heard continuously is the turnover in the superintendent is a problem. We need stability in the district, we don't need a revolving door superintendent. However they said that, that continued to come across with all the groups that we met with. This is a perception, okay, how people arrive at this perception, I don't know. You may know, I don't know. Too many personal and political agendas on the Board of Education. Now, let's just be blunt, put it on the table and say what it is, that's just what they said. Now, whether that's a perception, whether that's reality, I don't know, but that is a tremendous concern in, in the community with the individuals we've met with. It says the, the culture of the district, and not, this is not just now, it says the culture of the district is one of lack of trust. And they didn't say just now it's lack of trust, it's been a longstanding history of a lack of trust in this district. I don't know, well, I kind of know some of the reasons, because they told us some of the reasons, but I think that's something that is concerned, that needs to be addressed and worked on district-wide by this, whoever the new superintendent of the district is going to be. The fourth one says, again, lift your feet off the, off the floor, the Board of Education doesn't understand their role and micromanages the district. Now, again, perception, I don't know if that's reality, I don't know if that's true. I'm not saying it's true, I'm just telling you what we heard, and, you know, that's something that you as a board, I think, needs to be aware, you need to be aware of, so you can be conscious of that as you go through your roles as, as board members and as collectively as a board. There are outdated board policies, they weren't specific on that, they just said the policy manual needs to be updated, revised, reviewed, revised, and maybe that's for the board attorney to, to be aware of that. Again, perception, maybe not reality, I don't know. Lack of equity came up in a lot of different areas, equity for students, facilities, a, a number of things, but lack of equity for students, hiring practices are inequitable. Although we heard that technology is a strength, we also heard that the technology infrastructure, some devices and student access to technology is not as strong as it should be. So, I don't know, and I don't recall if that was from school to school or if that was a, a general across the district, but we heard that several times. Equity regarding school facilities, facility issues due to neglect, salary schedule, we heard that a lot from especially teachers and the educators, that the salary schedule causes challenges regarding teacher and administrator retention. It appears to us, Dr. Ferry and I, that you're able to recruit and hire some really good teachers, and they stay here for about five years or six years, and they get all the training, and they get prepared, they get the experience, and all of that, and because of your salary schedule, that then they are recruited by or choose to go to another district. And the teachers and other educators are really concerned about that, about getting the salary schedule to a point where you can retain those teachers and keep them in the classrooms here in your district. Again, difficulty attracting or retaining teachers, I think emphasis is on the retaining. I think attracting, you attract good teachers, but retaining is the biggest issue. Of course, every district in America is going to say this one, everybody is going to say you have budget issues and we need more funding, obviously. Apathy regard, regarding leadership, that, I want to make sure this is framed right, that there's apathy about who's going to be the next superintendent, you know why? Because of the revolving door, well, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter who gets it because they're not going to be here very long, that's what was said, and that's based on past history. Hopefully that will change, I think that's really important that we, that we have stability, or not just you, but every district has stability in the superintendent's position. There's a disconnect between the central office and the schools, you can read there what it says, but the comment that was said that kind of struck a chord with me was, and this was, someone made this comment, said the central office is in Oz and the schools are in Kansas. So, that kind of describes what they're feeling, the person that, that described this is the central office is kind of its own thing, and then the schools are kind of out there on their own. Again, is that a perception or is that reality? I don't know, that's something that the superintendent needs to be aware of, so he or she can address it. Human resources was mentioned several times, too data-driven, now that's, I understand that one, that's a state and federal mandate many times to, to record the data and be data-driven, that's just a part of teaching, but that was a perception of many, was it's too data-driven. News media is not a friend of the system, there continues to be, racism in the school district, diversity in the communities, I thought this was a telling, a telling comment. Diversity, and this wasn't just one comment, this was over and over. Diversity in the community, communities does not translate to diversity in the schools. What you see in the, the city and the surrounding area here is not reflected in the schools, and that's a concern. On the, turn the page, and the school board is in a tug-of-war with each other, and the public is frustrated by that. Again, yeah, I'm just laying it out there, I'm just going to put it on the table, you all have to deal with that, and with the next superintendent who is hired, is that a true statement or is that just a perception based on something that, that's happened? And I don't know the answer to that. Accreditation, some schools are not accredited, there's concerns over that. I think that's something the new superintendent should be aware of, and hopefully with the right leadership that that can be addressed and taken care of. That's, that is, I'm not saying it's an easy one, but that's one that many superintendents face and, and are able to accomplish that. High suspension and expulsion rates, absenteeism, student attendance, student dropout, student discipline, all those kind of grouped together on the students. Lack of positive public relations about the district and the good things that are going on. Again, perception, I don't know if that's true or not. Move down, one, this one came from a student, he was talking about cleanliness in the school. He said the school cleanliness is, needs to be from the roofs to the floors, those need to be cleaned. Lack of visibility of the superintendent, not being in the school, we heard that a tremendous amount of times, is the superintendent needs to be more visible out in the community, out in the schools, talking with teachers, talking with administrators, talking with students, getting, just being the face of the district, you know, and so sometimes that's, you know, it, it's hard to sit in your chair in the dis, in the central office and, and be out there doing that, but there needs to either be a balance or more, according to what they told us, that the superintendent needs to be out and visible more. Instability of leadership, several people said results in treacherous political landscape, because you don't have stability in leadership, it just seems to always be turmoil. Lack of understanding of the roles of the school board and the superintendent by the public, we heard that a number of times, said, well, and they would ask it like, well, I don't know the difference in the superintendent and the school board. And so, we tried to explain that in a nutshell, and they go, so there's a difference in their roles? Absolutely, well, what are their roles? They were wanting us to answer that. So, that's something I think about whatever means and mechanism the new superintendent and the board needs to determine, how can you make the public aware of what your roles and responsibilities are? Poverty is an issue always in most districts, and communication, just, and that's one of the hardest things in the world, is to, we, the, the biggest problem with communication is, you know, is the, the illusion that we have completed communication, that we think that we've, we've communicated with people and we have not effectively. So, those were some of the negatives, I didn't see anybody get upset, mad, or throw anything. You had, you were listening to everything that was mentioned here, and I appreciate that, because sometimes these, these comments that are made, you know, kind of hurt our hearts and kind of step on our toes, and, but it does, I think, help you as the board and hopefully the new superintendent to have some framework of what is it that we need to start with? Where do we need to work, what do we need to do in order to start moving this district forward again? So, with that said, any questions on, on that third section?
And I'll just jump in here, I noticed that there were a couple, I don't know if it's because you were reading and you skipped over them.
I did skip over them, yeah, I did that, I just went in and highlighted the ones that I thought I needed to address, some of them are, you know, you can read those and see what they say as well.
I don't have a question as much as a comment, but I found that it was very interesting that the very strength we have in diversity is also a challenge that we have, and it is definitely something that whoever our superintendent is, we need them to take that as one of their top priorities, yep.
That's a very good point, and we heard that over and over. It's a diversity, it's a strength for our district and our community, it's a weakness for our district and maybe community, I don't know.
Definitely a challenge.
A challenge, yeah, a challenge, I like the word challenge.
Particularly with the, with the concept of equity.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Because I, on, during the, many of the community group meetings, there was a confusion between what is the difference between equality and equity, and people don't understand that. So, we, we actually had, spent some time talking about, here's what, here's what equality is, but here's what equity is, to try to really get folks to understand what the diff, they're very, very distinct. And yes, I agree with you, that strength of diversity, challenge of equity.
We need to translate that into our school house. Absolutely.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, we'll go to number four, which is, Ralph will take that, read the question and then tell them what we found out.
Well, you can see the list of adjectives, and the only, the only thing that's not there is the ability to walk across Chesapeake Bay. So, I, I'm just going to summarize what I, what I think really came across, and then you can certainly read all these adjectives, but the whole concept of communication, visibility, listening, right, a knowledge of the community, the ability to create a team, the ability to bring people together. Someone who was genuine, and Barry emphasized this throughout, probably one of the most important characteristics of an outstanding leader, which, which across the literature is honesty. You know, people really want to hear the honest truth about what the issues are and what's going on. You know, they're talking, they talked about resiliency. It's, it's critical that the, the next person has to have the ability to work well with this Board of Education, to, to collaborate with the stakeholders. Across the board, someone who was a student advocate, any decision that's made has to be made in what's in the best interest of the students, of the kids. Track record of, record of success, someone who's willing to be passionate and a warrior for school funding and for resources on behalf of the students. Certainly, understanding politics is a critical component. And, and, you know, the ability to understand how the school district is funded and how to get those funds, and let's be straight up and honest here, that's got to be someone who understands politics and the political nature of, of how school districts are funded, particularly in, in the city. And then, you know, we've heard of passion, compassionate, a team player, someone who's a champion for the district, and again, critically, someone who can develop an outstanding working relationship with the Board of Ed and the City Council. And then you could see all the others, but you could, and, and I think we both agree, these are critical attributes for the person who's coming in here next, and somebody who wants to come in here and be here long-term.
So, if I can, ideas kind of pop in here. So, when we get down to like a final three or something like that, is there anything within the protocol that we have or establish in there where, I know you get references, but are any of those references, and I don't know, it might be challenging, from prior boards or anything that these individuals have worked on?
Absolutely, yes, especially if they're a sitting superintendent, we get, or previous superintendent, we get those reference checks with previous board members.
The, the questions that you'll ask the semifinalist, we'll see the video next time, we'll address some of those things, will they be the kind of questions that'll address some of the concerns that are, are positives and?
We won't get deep into those, there are three questions, they have three minutes to answer the question, they may bring out some of these things, they may not, and their responses, they're not focused directly on these, but you'll get a good sense for what the person believes.
We'll be able to watch that on the video.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I love that, okay.
Guys, one of the other things I had in here was the loyalty to district and plans to stay longevity. And I think I may have mentioned in one of our initial meetings the requirement that we have for that individual to be a resident in Norfolk.
And that's something that you can put, place in your contract.
Okay.
Right.
We can make, and we will make, those individuals who are in the, who's on the shortlist will make them aware that's going, that's going to be a requirement.
Okay.
So, we still have some work, and you have some work to do with your attorney to, you know, kind of nail down the contract, the length of contract, what's in that contract, what's going to be required of that individual, so we still have some work to do, or you have some work to do with that, so yes, that's, that's something we'll make them aware of that they must, must live here.
Yeah, because I think that's a little concern, because sometimes it's a lip service thing to that, you know, they rent a place, their family stays someplace else, those kinds of things. I think that we're looking for a real commitment to the city. kinds of things. I think that we're looking for a real commitment to the city, necessarily to the community of their, we want them to be part of the community.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions on this, the first sections? If, if you'll, if not, we'll turn to the next section, which just basically starts with, if you'll look on, that's page six, stakeholder input. And there's the four questions. I will give you day one, central office staff that came. And so it's broken down by each of the four questions and what the central office staff said. I'm not gonna go through all that because we kind of summarized that already. And then you flip over to page eight, there's the Group Two Elementary Teachers and School Staff who are at BT Washington. Question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I have a quick general question. Sorry.
Go ahead.
About how many, can you tell us as you walk through the stakeholder groups, generally, you know, if you have a number of how many people attended, if you could share, how many people?
We kept that generally. We didn't keep it specific. I would say the, for the most part, the central office staff, elementary teachers, secondary teachers was a small group. Principals was a little larger group that participated. And then, of course, as you said, the community groups were even larger. But, you know, and I don't know if that was because of timing or other commitments, or I, I have no idea.
Right. Well, I asked that, I asked that specifically because, you know, if we know, you know, central office, for instance, is, you know, X number of individuals and, you know, if there are five were there, then we know that perhaps we may want to seek additional input to, to have a better representation of that group. So that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at, is.
And we, we told every group, we emphasized the, that the survey was online. If they couldn't attend, they certainly could participate by contributing through the survey. You know, I don't want, mean for this to sound like it's gonna sound, but you can't twist someone's arm and make them attend a voluntary meeting and you can't require them to give input on something they don't want to give input on. So, you know, I, I felt like you as the district went over and beyond by giving thirteen or twelve opportunities for them. And what we said was, we're not gonna keep anyone, if, if a business leader comes to a community meeting or a community member comes to one, we're not gonna ask them to leave.
Right, sure.
They're really all open, except maybe the student one. We, we'll be careful with that one. But all of the others was basically open to whoever wanted to come. So I think you really did go over and above what would be required, or not required, but maybe thought necessary by individuals. I would be surprised if anyone in this district, you said, did you get a chance to, to participate? I would be surprised if you had anyone who said, no, I didn't know about it and I didn't want, I didn't have an opportunity to participate at all. I would be surprised with that because we had twelve meetings, twelve exhausting meetings over a three-day exhausting period of time. And, and Karen can attest that, she, she shuttled us all over town. And, and then they had the survey, the online. All they'd do is click if they are technologically literate at all, they can just click on that and fill out the survey and they had their opportunity. So, you know, I know that's a concern about the numbers and I, and it's a concern about, you know, did everybody have the opportunity? At least, in my opinion, you did. And, and I'll say this, in the other districts that I've done this for, I would say your numbers align very closely with what other districts do. I, I have some opinions on why that is and it has nothing to do with what the board chose to do and us holding those meetings. Okay. So if you'll continue to look through the book, and I'm not gonna go through that, I'm just kind of pointing that out, that those were the, the groups. It gives you the group, it gives you the comments. We don't tell you who said it. We don't tell you who's at the meeting. Uh, some of you were at various meetings and so you know some of the people who were there. And so you can see what was said. And then over toward the back, obviously, there, on page thirty-six, the Survey Monkey results for this school district. Those, that's the online survey and those were the responses as well. So in your spare time, tongue-in-cheek I say that, in your spare time, you can go through and read all of the responses individually to all of those questions. And if there's something that we left out, it was not intentional, we weren't not trying to hide anything, we're not trying to cover anything up, we just wanted to stick with the basic overview of this. And you may see some things that come to your attention that we didn't list, but that's fine. It's in there. It's for your information and your knowledge to move forward with.
So who is intended to receive these booklets?
I'm sorry?
Who's intended to receive these booklets?
At this point, only you have this.
The board.
Yes, the board.
Okay.
At this point.
Because Ms. Tanner was given a copy of the booklet.
She was given a copy of the booklet?
Yeah.
I would expect for her to keep it.
Generally, it's available to anyone.
Yeah, it's not secret.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, matter of fact, the public.
So the public?
Yes.
Exactly. So that's, that's what I'm asking.
In the meetings, the public asked if it would be made public.
I may have misunderstood your question. I thought you were saying we should limit that, but so we actually, we act.
Public was, yeah.
So if the, okay.
We actually, our, our corporate office was going to publish this at the end of last week. And I said, oh, no, 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 don't put, they're gonna put it on our website. And I said, don't put that on our website until you, we wanted you to have the first opportunity to hear and see what it says because you may get calls or you may run into someone who has a question. And so we want you to be in a position to be able to respond first by knowing what it says before. So, I don't know if you gave the board attorney one, we have, did you get one?
And he has one also.
Uh, just now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. Well, that's the first time we've distributed it. It was just now.
Anything distributed in an open session is a public record, available to the public.
We understand that.
And so do you all intend to post this on your site as well?
Yes, and you can post it on your site as well. So it's not an issue with that.
I'm just asking. I wanna, I just wanna know.
It should be available for the public.
We are, we are in this open, we are in this open session, so people should be allowed to know this. There's no, um.
If I could just, it was a theme in a lot of the meetings, are we going to, they want, they want to make sure that we were doing our due diligence in terms of recording what they shared with us. And, yeah, the way that's done is by you publishing this.
Smith, I apologize if you misunderstood what I was saying. What I was saying.
Because if, so if we ask Ms. Tanner to post this on our website, we are in, absolutely within our right to, to do that. Okay.
Exactly. So the, the only thing that I wanted to ask, and I don't care, and if you know, do we have a, is there a page on the, the website that's kind of following the whole superintendent search process?
We have a page.
That we can put this, yeah, 'cause I think with the, the meetings and things, so we could put the link directly there, so that we can know one place is a board, we can direct people to, to get all the information in one place.
They can give me the link and they can have IT do it.
Great. So it is public and individuals in the public who are watching, they can find that information there.
I think the whole thing that we really strive for during the entire superintendent search is to be as transparent as possible with the public and all of our stakeholders.
Definitely. So, good question, Ms. Smith. So we clarified that and I'll take it back over to you.
Sure. Ms. Smith, I didn't mean to mislead you or make you think I was saying one thing when that's not what I meant. I was just, all I was saying was we held it until now so you could see it first and then it'll be released.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions on the stakeholder input report, then we'll move forward. The next item on our agenda is to develop interview questions. And so, um, our protocol, our protocol for this, I'm sorry?
I was just joking. I said, this is where the three hours comes in.
Hopefully not. We have established a protocol through McPherson and Jacobson where we actually supply you with a number of questions. And that's the activity that we're gonna do today. We're not gonna start from ground zero and, and with you and all try to come up. So here's, let me tell you how we started and where we are right now and what the process we hope will be for today. We have, we started with, the questions are based on those six characteristics that you developed. Remember last time, they're in the brochure. And for example, the first one, criteria one, the superintendent experience preferred in an urban district with similar size and demographics, including the requirement of experience as a building principal. Okay, so that's criteria number one. And so we have developed, either through McPherson and Jacobson or other sources, Dr. Ferry and I have put nine questions here under that particular criteria. And what we're gonna ask you to do is to read through the nine questions that we have supplied for you and to mark an X by your top three that you think should be asked. Okay? And so, once we do that, Dr. Ferry and I will take your feedback on that, take these back. We will compile those and determine which quest, which three questions under each criteria that will be asked. Now, Dr. Ferry and I talked about this this morning. We think we should move forward with this process. And then between now and we'll, once those are determined and we've compiled those, we'll get those questions back to you. But if you as a board say, hey, we want to ask this other question, or we want to, we want to do some, you know, we, we don't think there's enough emphasis being placed on this or that, we're open to, these are your questions. We're here to help you. We're not here to dictate to you what you ask. But this process has worked beautifully across the other districts where you as a board, to start at ground zero as to, well, which areas do we ask questions on? What do we ask? How do we ask it? What's legal? What's not legal? Then this kind of streamlines that. Dr. Ferry made a, a very, a very good comment this morning. I was driving in and he said, you know, it really doesn't matter a lot how the question is worded or even what the category is. You're gonna learn so much about these individuals when you get, when you've narrowed them down to the finalists, you've read all of their material, you've seen all their references, you hear them speak on video, and you get down, you bring them into the district, you're gonna feel like you know them already. And then those questions will just allow you to get to know them a little better.
Right.
So I thought that's a very good point. And with that said.
I can just add one other thing to that, too. This will be online, this document, right? So you're gonna learn very quickly if the candidates do their due diligence in terms of looking at this document in preparation for the questions they're gonna ask.
Right.
And they're, I'm sorry.
So that, when you say the document, you mean the one that you're giving us now with all the questions that we can choose from?
No, he's talking about the stakeholder.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm already.
In other words, even though the, even though the questions are under the six criteria that we worked in when I was doing it, uh, when you ask these questions, you're gonna get a clear understanding in terms of the due diligence that the applicants have done in terms of looking.
Because it's have been.
If I was applying to Norfolk, I, this would be the first document.
Mm-hmm.
Did you have anything to say?
Nope. Hence why I was asking the question.
What a point. Quick, quick question I wanted for clarity, Dr. Carroll. If there are, so we get this document that you're about to hand out now, and if there's a question that any one of the colleagues have that's not on that one, we're going to pose the question out here and talk about it because I just want to make sure that everyone kind of weighs on it and since we have this time now, so we're not holding up the process.
Okay.
Is that fine?
We have, no problem with that.
Do you want me to pass these out?
So, just so, so there are different number of, of, of questions under each criteria. We're gonna take these one at a time, okay? So I'm gonna take the first criteria, I'm gonna talk to you about the question. I'm not gonna read them to you because you can read, everybody in the room can read. But we're gonna kind of place a time on it and go, okay, we're gonna take this amount of time. Or I'll just ask, has everybody finished reading the question, you feel comfortable? And go ahead and mark your three top questions. I guess at that point, if you choose to do so, you can pose a different question at that point related to that criteria, if that's something you want to do.
Yeah, I just don't want us, because I know how time sensitive everything and I want to hold up your process. So if someone has something that comes to mind, we put it on the table so we can all discuss it, whether or not we'll add it and then we can keep it moving.
Can do a quick, kind of a quick discussion though, so we can get through them all.
Yeah.
They have to leave at 1:30.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're doing pretty good.
So when we finish, so I'm clear, so when we finish, so you're gonna give us the nine questions that go with.
Criteria one.
Criteria one. And then each of us are going to mark our top three.
That's correct.
And then we're gonna bring it back up here. And if we're lucky, a lot of us will be marking some of the same questions and we'll start seeing.
We're not gonna bring it back up here. You're gonna give them to us. We're gonna compile those and then I will send that back to you.
And then we just add the questions that we want to add to see what kind of support it has by the whole board.
So, let me say this, the sixth criteria that you've, no, no.
Wait, he's got confused. No, what I'm saying is, right here, right now, because they're gonna take this all the way back.
Right.
That if there's a question that anyone comes up in what, a category that we think that should be there, we pose it as a board and put it on the table, have a brief discussion about it so that they know to take it back and add it.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Now.
Yeah, now. So we can keep it moving.
Because we don't want some outline or question that no one else is interested in.
Exactly.
Okay. Do you, that makes sense.
Go ahead.
Do you have a recommend, recommendation of the number of questions that are generally acceptable in a situ, yeah?
And, and that's, that was gonna be my next comment. The first question in an interview should always be, and this one generally the board president asks this question, tell us about your background and why you want to be superintendent of the school district. Okay, so that's the first question. So that's a given. That's, that one's pretty much locked in. Then after that, we'll move on. So you have the first question. Then we have six different criteria that you all set. If you choose three out of each one, that's eighteen more questions, okay? And then on the very back page, we have other possible questions and we'll get to that as well. These relate to safety, transportation, school board relationships, excuse me, superintendent board relationships, community partnerships, finance, compensation, academic gaps, priorities and facility, facilities and planning. So those are, and we're gonna ask for your top five out of there, unless, again, you want to add a different question, okay? So, we have the first question, we have eighteen questions, which is nineteen, and then we have the additional five, which is twenty-four. And then the last question should always be, what questions do you have as a, as a, okay. So, let's just say, and you may say, hey, we don't want to ask twenty-five. These are your questions. You can strike whatever you want to when we get to that point. Generally, in a, in an interview, when we get to, or when all of you get to the final interviews, you want to limit the amount of time that they have to answer each question, whether that's three minutes or four minutes. If you go five minutes, you're probably gonna have to narrow the number of questions you ask. If you go four minutes, you can make this, probably make this work, okay? And certainly with three-minute responses. I would encourage you now, I'll just say this, when you're doing the final interviews, that you make them aware of that upfront. We'll try to make them aware if we can determine those parameters before then. We'll say they're gonna give you four minutes to answer the question. And you need a timekeeper, someone who keeps the time on how long this candidate has been speaking. If they finish before the, let's say it's four minutes, then great. If they get to four minutes, you make them aware, your, your time is up and let them finish their statement. So, you know, that's, that's one of those things of kind of controlling the interview, if you will, to make sure you stay within time frames. So after this process, there'll be twenty-five questions identified, okay? If you all feel like we need to narrow those, you can narrow it however you want to. Another thing, just to make you aware, is that when you are asking the questions, you certainly want to have, you certainly want every board member to have the opportunity to ask questions. So when you get the twenty-five questions, you may want to say, hey, I really like number twelve, that's kind of in my area, that's kind of what I'm passionate about. I'd love to ask that question. Could I ask that question? Doesn't matter who asks it, but that'd be fine. If you all want to assign, I would just say you, you're equal and balanced in that, that all board members get to ask the same amount of questions, except maybe the board chair who gets to ask that first question and then you can determine if, if she or the vice president needs to ask the last question of what questions do you have. So, in a nutshell, that's what we're doing today. That's what we're trying to determine. Again, I think it's a good process. It streamlines it when we do it this way. And, and I hope when you read the questions, you'll be pleased with those. But if you're not, again, you can add additional questions or we can talk about the questions that are on, on the page.
So we need to, so we know that the board chair will ask that beginning question because that's the, everybody asks that one. And that at the end, the board chair or the vice chair will ask, will just ask for any other comments or give them a chance?
Ask the, ask the, each finalist, do they have any questions?
Yeah, any questions, okay. Not, they don't, okay. And so it, so then that leaves the regular interview process with seven of us. And we all should have the same number of questions. So we could just say, you know, well, everyone's asking two questions, that's fourteen. If everybody wants to ask three questions, it's twenty-one. Oh, I would think so. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and do you have the same person ask the same question to each of the candidates?
That's, that's.
That's pretty typical. That's what we do here in Norfolk for, for all of our administration, all the administration interviews. If, if I'm on the panel and I have question three and question nine, I ask that of all the candidates. So it's the same tone. It makes it much more equal. Okay, I just wondered.
Quick, careful note, Ms. Smith, did you have a question?
Yeah. So roughly, we're looking at an hour interview, maybe a little more, with a number of questions and roughly four minutes per question, just in general. Also, when asking questions, do we just state the question so that there is a fair interview for all candidates when one asked to elaborate on the question? Do you follow?
Generally, you ask the question. Generally, you ask the question, again, that's up to all of you, how you want to have that. Sometimes there can be a clarifying question. If they said something you didn't, weren't understood, you might, that you didn't understand exactly what their response was, you may say, could you say that again? Or could you repeat what you said? Or did you, did you mean when you said?
I understand it on that side. I'm saying when we ask the questions of the candidate, for us, is it just that we ask the question without additional elaboration for fairness of all people who are interviewing? Do you, do you follow what I'm saying? I, I recommend that we do it.
Yes, well, that's what you would do. That's what you would do.
That we were kind of, or recommendations on how we regard ourselves as we get into a situation, yes, we're all asking a question.
But it's the same question for everyone. So some people may say, could you rephrase the question? My suggestion is that we not rephrase the question, that we keep it, all questions the same for all candidates.
That's what we suggest.
And that's what I meant, okay.
But again, let me say this one more time.
Same person ask the same question.
This process belongs to the board. This process does not belong to Matt Fisher and Jackson. We're here to help and guide and consult, give you advice. I agree with you, I think, just ask the question. But my point was, if you all decide that it's okay to ask a clarifying question, we're not going to say, hey, you can't do that, you know? You, you decide that. But, you know, I agree with you. Just ask the question, let them respond. Whatever they say is what they say. And that's what we suggest.
So each board member will ask two or three questions, the same question...
Yes.
To each of the candidates with the same time period, just like, yes.
Yeah.
I think that's what we, because we want to be fair to all the candidates.
Yeah. Okay, we'll get started with this. If you'll give those three out on this side, and I'll...
Let's be pen or ink, so I have to change.
Can we get a five-minute one?
This might be a good time to add.
Is that a privileged question?
Is it, is it possible to take a quick five and then come right back to this? All right. All right. All right, we're going to take a quick five, and then we'll jump back into this. Okay. We're doing so great on time.
We're going to be on time.
Oh, yeah.
If you will, place an X on the top three questions under each criteria. So the criteria one, and these are the ones that you would like to have the superintendent candidates ask in the interview. Criteria one, superintendent experience preferred in an urban district with similar size and demographics, including the requirement of experience as a building principal. There are nine questions. Don't miss the three on the second page. Nine questions related to that criteria. We'd ask, I would ask, and, and that's up to Mr. Clanton, whether there's discussion at this point or not, but I'd ask you completely read through all three and, and then mark, make some type of mark on the three, or if you have a question, we'll address those at the end after one completes. Are we, are we back in session?
Yeah, I called it back.
I'm, I'm, I'll just ask you. I just had a question. This is question number six.
Yes.
I don't understand that question at all. Basically, in a nutshell, has to do with best practices. What would you, what do you do with at-risk students? What kind of strategies, what kind of best practices do you utilize in order to help those students who are not on grade level, who are not, or maybe they're at risk in academic at risk? That's what it's referring to.
Can I, can I make a comment to that?
Go ahead.
So can we, can we generally, speaking as a board, commit to not describing our students that way? I have such a reaction to that, like failing and at-risk students. They're not, I mean, it's about the opportunities that we provide them. So we, I, I do not want to put out a question in an interview that describes our students in that way, like at all, period. I mean, can we, I mean, it just, it just springs...
Makes sense.
We don't normally say it.
Well, I mean, the way it's worded here, and I've seen it in other places.
So do you have a recommendation of how you would...
It could be schools, students, and schools and chi, yeah, I mean...
Oh, that's true.
And then we'll discuss it? Yeah.
Because these are from your bank, right?
Well, I'm just trying to get a general...
So let's just put a little asterisk back here that if that gets into it, that we...
It's an easy answer, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Dr. Carroll, Dr. Ferry, if we have a suggestion, like for instance, for number six, if we may have different interpretations of what's that specific question is getting at, if we have a suggested change in the question, can we bring that forward, too?
That's fine. Your questions...
This would be the time I just think sort of...
Yeah, so same, I have a...
Have a full board discussion on it.
Yes, right. I have a similar question.
We're just stopping at one, right?
We're just doing the first criteria, just note, just number one, please, so we can kind of stay together as we walk through these.
Needs more time on criteria one. We're just doing criteria one. Is everybody done? Well, okay.
No.
You're not?
No.
Needs more time on criteria one, right?
Yep, just criteria one.
Is everybody done with criteria one?
Yes.
Still needs more time. Mr. Troy, you still working on it?
I've got a couple minutes, but we can go.
Okay, I just wanted, no, no, I just wanted to gauge where everybody, so you're still working on one, Ms. Bessin? Okay.
Are we supposed to stop after one?
We're supposed to stop at one, and then...
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand that.
Are we still waiting on question one?
No.
We're still on criteria ones?
You can, you can start, I mean, I'll...
Are you working on the rewording of that particular one?
Well, that one and I had a couple other...
One you want to add?
Questions for consideration.
I mean, we're not rushing anything. I mean, it's, Dr. Carroll, it's your decision.
You know, it's, it's up to you if you want to add questions. We have, you know, if it's, if it's wordsmithing, we have no problem with how the question is asked. I want to make that clear. These are, these are not sacred questions. We have no problem with that. But again, how it's asked, you're probably going to arrive at the same answer from the, from the candidates if you're hitting the, the major part of the question. So, you know, if you feel there's a need to wordsmith, then that's, that's fine. But, you know, you can't take seven different opinions on wordsmithing and try to make the question what it, to fit everyone's criteria. So anyway, if you want to add a question, we're certainly, if the board, and this is up to you, if you say, if everybody is in agreement, let's add this question and everybody consider that one, we'll add that as question 10, and we have no problem with that whatsoever.
So is there any considerations, I guess, in the first criteria of adding a question that wasn't here? Did anybody ask? Ms. Bessin?
I had a question about, did your district have an equity policy? If so, how have you executed that policy and what are some of the lessons learned?
Which number was that?
That was under, it's a, it's a question I'm posing as a consideration.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
He asked about if we wanted to add a question.
That's a great question, and we have very similar question under criteria four.
Oh, okay.
So let's take a look. Can we just hop real quick?
Yeah, sure. With that said, I mean...
Oh, I didn't go ahead, but...
We may want to go through the whole document.
And then just kind of come in.
And that way, you'll say, hey, they're asking that over on this.
You'll see that that question there.
As opposed to, you know, we have that in there, but we don't have it under number one.
I just thought it, I thought it tied into this particular criteria because we're talking about size and demographics.
It could be asked under either.
Either.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I didn't go ahead, so I'm...
Why don't we do, why don't we do that? We'll go on to each, each criteria and let you kind of work through it again, however you want to do the add questions, whatever, make your notes, mark your top three, and then at the end, we'll go back through it again and, and add what you want to add.
That'll work.
Keep working.
All right, so we're going to go through every one, and then we'll come back because there might, the question that you might want to ask may be answered to us.
That was, that was a good question.
How long do we have to finish this?
It's our time, about eleven or so?
Um, well, how's everybody coming along?
I'm not done.
Right. Ms. Vaseen?
I'm not done.
Okay, done, okay. It's like more than five more minutes?
Hmm, probably not.
Is there another number for this one to do?
So, after, Dr. Carroll, after we do this, do we have another activity that we're working on?
We have no activities, we just, the other agenda items was just to talk, and you may say, hey, we don't want to talk about this now, and that's fine. The length of the contract, so you could involve those who've applied, how much the intended length of contract, how many years that is. Moving expenses, for example, they asked, will the board pay for moving expenses? We need to make that determination. Of course, interview expenses have already, I think, sort of been determined, you all would pay for that, so, that's the next agenda item. Four and five may not even be necessary, because we usually do the candidate's daily interview schedule, but since the interviews are going to be closed.
Well, that hasn't been determined yet, because the board has to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see.
So, when we get to that?
Probably just listen to me saying, I wanted you to be open and transparent, but I don't get to decide.
The board hasn't voted on whether it's open or closed yet.
No, I think that, yeah, I think that was hoped to decide today.
Today, okay, okay.
So, the objective is to make sure everything that you need, that doesn't encumber your process, that we take care of it. So, we need to take a vote on something, we do that.
Right, okay.
So, just, in lieu, we've got about to be two and a half hours, how much time you, do we all think you may need for a question?
Because we need to have time to discuss some.
Questions on, wait.
The questions that we're reviewing now, or is it?
I'm still finishing.
Hour soon, do that, wouldn't you think, an hour to get through all the questions?
Maybe, potentially.
Well, I would think so.
So, I don't know, the Vaseen's still working, the Smith, are you still working? Mr. Jordan?
I'm, I'll finish.
You're finishing now, okay. So, Ms. Vaseen, if we can do five more minutes, and then, that not to stop you, you can still continue to write, but at least we can get the process started.
You can start, I mean, yeah, well, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Tanner? The, we're doing a working lunch, right? So, what time is that supposed to be?
So, you can determine.
Okay. And then, we have a break at 1:30.
I think we'll probably need it by then.
Quick thirty minute break before we go to the next session.
During the middle of our twelve plus hour day.
All right, so, Dr. Carroll, I'll go ahead and kick things back over to you, and we'll go ahead.
Yeah, so, I, I think, from our perspective and where we are, again, let me say, these are, questions aren't sacred, these are questions we felt related to each of the criteria that you set forth. We want the questions to meet what you, as the board, want them to be, so, with that said, I think we just need to see if there, as we started earlier, is there additional question that needs to be added, or rewording, or totally striking a question. I have no problem if the board says, let's strike that one and vote for three others. What we need at the end of this process is three questions from each one of these sections, from each person. What are your top three? And then, we'll compile that, and we'll take that and compile it, and get, send those questions back to you.
So, what we'll do is do each criteria, and then, if we want to add something to the question, that we could suggest, we could do that?
That's, we're up to you.
Or if we want to write a whole new, new question in here?
A whole new question, that's fine.
And then, one of us might have three marked, but then, we might like the new question better, so, we would take that one out that we had previously marked and mark the new question?
Sure. When we finish, we want three, three of them marked.
So, when you take them home?
Whether it's your question or an existing question.
Okay, then.
Jordan? So, I tried to complete the assignment, generally speaking. So, um, I tried to complete the assignment. Uh, generally speaking, um, uh, I didn't like most of the questions, uh, and largely because, um, I was looking for, uh, questions that would, um, really encourage the candidates to speak to their, strengths and their successes that they've had. And the way that the, most of the questions to me came across as worded, um, it was like, um, you know, what would you do if, it was like very hypothetical, or what might you do? I really didn't get a sense in, in any of the criteria where, um, you know, tell us about the success that you've had, how you've achieved it. How did you rally support, uh, amongst your, uh, academic team and so forth? You know, I was looking for questions that would speak to, uh, you know, innovation, how they, you know, brought about innovation and moved the needle on academic achievement. Or, um, you know, there were questions in here that spoke to, uh, I thought there were questions in here that they kind of addressed a deficit perspective with students. But I really didn't see anything that, um, was really trying to push forward. So if we have students that have, um, um, academic challenges, then I did see some questions in there that addressed that. But if we have students who are, uh, doing well in comparison to other students in the division, but may not be doing as well as we know as we could be in comparison to the rest of the country or the rest of the region. I really didn't get, um, get that to scream out, so.
Did you change any, or make any proposals, Mr. Jordan?
Well, yeah, yeah, in some instances, yes. I, I'd really, I was really trying to get a feel for the process, because I know we're going to submit those questions, and then there'll be this, this back and forth. I just wanted to say at a high level, um, I just didn't feel that the questions that we have in the criteria were really giving the candidates an opportunity to speak to their strengths and their successes. And I think it's important that we, that we find a way to do that.
If I could make a suggestion, okay? For instance, you can take any of these questions and just add a, a statement after the question and simply say, like for instance, under criteria four, what strategies will you implement to assist teachers and students to eliminate achievement gaps within the district? Please cite specific examples of your success.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I did too.
Yeah, and you can add that statement to any of these and get exactly to what Mr. Jordan's suggestion is. So, because abso, I, I would, I would surmise, most often having gone through this myself, that when you get that question, any of these questions, you are going to go to those successes. But Mr. Jordan makes a good point.
So I'm, Ms. Bassin, first.
Now, I, I just wanted to, I wholeheartedly agree, which is why I was taking so long is because I did feel similarly, you know, that there was more deficit thinking versus, um, aspirational thinking and getting at their experience. So I just wanted to second, second that.
I also agree with what Mr. Jordan said, and what I did is probably what Ms. Bassin did. For example, number five in criteria one, I changed it to say, what is your process for recruiting, developing, hiring, training, evaluating? I added in, and retaining top-notch principles. Give an example of what you have done.
Yes, yeah.
Same thing, and number one, I just left it like it was, but after, at the end of it, I wrote, be specific. Because I agree, we need, I want to hear what they've done. That's the reason we were looking for current superintendents, all right, that kind of thing, so.
Right.
Would that?
Yes.
How would that be, Mr. Jordan? Because I like the questions. I think, I mean, I like the, the, uh, the, um, content of the questions. But I totally agree that we, and that's what I was working on too, is that we need to have examples. Be specific. Give an example of that. I have that throughout here.
Yes.
Do we know if we agreed on any of these?
Hmm, not yet.
I think, um, I heard one.
That's a good point.
In, um, in criteria one on five, like I picked five, and I would be in agreeance to changing into what is your process?
Yeah, what is, give an example. And I also like adding the word evaluating, which really ties into an earlier question.
Recruitment.
Process for recruiting.
That wasn't on your list?
No.
Okay.
I'm saying, like, can we see where we agreed?
I know they were going to take it back, so I guess it, um.
So we're on criteria one, we're coming to an agreement on.
Yeah, we're supposed, we're not, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me. Not yet.
Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to get back to what we're, so right now, which one of our, you want the top three from criteria one?
For each one of us, not, we're not doing.
Why don't we just do a little straw poll to keep it moving here? So how many of y'all pick one? Okay, was there any changes to one for anybody else?
I added be specific.
Does anybody object to adding be sp, be specific to that?
No, but I did put and/or, because we're, we say it's, someone could, it says superintendent experience preferred.
Or just say as a principal or.
Oh, I see, I agree with that. That's good.
Okay, so why don't I do this? I'm just going to set a threshold. If there's no more than four, we're not going to talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, because then that would be the majority of what they're going to look for. Is that cool? So number two.
But are we supposed to be narrowing it down for all of us?
We're not going to get, we're just trying to keep it moving just to kind of see where we are and if there needs to be any additional discussion on it. So number two, did anybody pick that? Just two?
I picked it, but I reworded.
I reworded it also.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Want to share your?
Just because, well, I mean, Ms.
It's still only three.
Part, part of the reason for this process this way is because we need to be careful about telling everybody what questions we're going to ask.
Well, and I'm not even trying to do that, I'm just trying to figure out where.
But as we word Smith them, you know, we, we need to be careful about that.
But in, in essence, we are doing that, because
Yeah.
Yeah. My impression coming here, I thought we were going to go in the closed session and do this work.
We're not allowed to.
I thought we were.
That was what I thought too.
I was asked about that. I don't see any basis we do that in executive session.
Yeah, see, that's.
I've never seen an interview where people have questions beforehand.
That was my long discussion too, but I lost.
The personnel exemption is tied into discussions of specific employees.
Yeah, because of laws, law.
If you want to, when you get to it, to talk about questions for a specific candidate based on their experience and resume, that can certainly be done in executive session. And of course, the interviews can be done in executive session. But in general, discussing the strategies and questions that'll be asked in general of all candidates
Follow the law.
Uh, without regard to the specific.
I was really upset about this.
You know, criteria are, you know, strengths and weaknesses of a specific candidate. That cannot be discussed in executive session. You have to remember, the rule is, everything must be done in open session unless it meets the exact criteria listed in one of the exemptions. And the court narrowly interprets those exemptions, meaning by that, if there's any question, in general, the courts will say, you cannot discuss it in executive session. There has to be clear that the exemption applies to whatever you're discussing.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, hold on.
And I'm comfortable with that. I guess that's part of what my challenge is, because, um, developing the questions from your, from our candidate pool, to me then, is what provides the opportunity to do some things that are specific in addition to those things that are general. Right now, I'm just trying to get a flow for, um, uh, I mean, I don't really, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me that we discuss this in public in terms of some of the general questions, because we know there are going to be some specific questions. I'm just trying to make sure I'm following the process, because as I understood it, we're going through this, we're going to turn it in, you're going to come back with what our, uh, high-level, general questions are. And then at some point, we will get to the point where we are reviewing candidate profiles, which then would result in some additional questions that we may have of specific candidates.
When we come back on December fourth, uh, Mr. Jordan, the process again, and maybe I should be more clear, was to get the, the three questions, the, the three questions, not even necessarily, as I said, these questions aren't sacred. But pick three questions, we come back, and let's just say, for example, you pick the top three of criteria one, question one, two, and three. We come back on December fourth, we haven't gotten to the finalist yet. We can set, if we need to set aside time for you all, and between now and that time, to add, delete, tweak, eliminate, whatever you want to do.
So you would almost send us like another document back and that we could?
Yes, that's what we're going to do. And then you take that and go, well, you know, we voted, you know, we liked number three, but now I don't really like number three. Or maybe we need to add to number three, or we need to delete something from number three.
So, Dr. Carol, we'll have another opportunity to talk about this on December fourth.
That's my, that's my hope, is that we want the questions to be what you want. We're here to help you to develop the questions that you want. Notice, it doesn't say, what it says is suggested questions. You can, you can put two of these questions together if you choose to do so, that's fine. We have no problem with that. We're just trying to help you get to, and the first pro, the first step in that is to try to determine
What those top three are.
What those top three are, then you can add to, delete, from, or whatever.
So in all, hold on a second, one second, just want to get clarity here. So when the, uh, what Mr. Jordan was saying, by December fourth, will we have a top three, or are we still?
We have a top three, uh, candidates. That's the night or the day that you will select those.
So based on that one, Mr. Jordan?
That's right.
So what we, so based on that, Mr. Jordan, we could go in and get a little bit more detailed and specific with some of the additional questions?
Right, is that, is that right, Mr. Cloud? Because I don't want.
I would, the only thing.
The only way to discuss the questions in executive session will be if you're discussing them in terms of the specific candidates.
So.
You're looking at their records, their resumes, their past, and you're forming questions geared specifically to individual candidates based on their records. That, that would be, uh, suitable for executive session.
So, so then if, if we do what we're being led to do today, and we get the top three general questions, uh, and then December fourth, we review our semi-finalist and choose our three finalists. At that time, with those three finalists, then the board can do, and I agree with Mr. Jordan on this, the board could then take our general questions from each category, each of our criteria, and, and look at can, uh, finalist number one and say, looking over those questions, after we know, we could then add a question or two that were very candidate or finalist specific, and we could do each of those with the three finalists?
Correct. That can be done in executive session.
Okay, because I, you know, I'm the one that messes up to begin with, because I thought we would be doing the questions.
And it's also, there's nothing to prevent individual board members from asking their own individual questions without discussing it at a time.
Yeah, well, or the board could agree to let them do that or not do that.
Well, yes, I mean, it would be up to the board, I'm saying, it would not be illegal, and I know in fact that it has been the process in, in choosing candidates for, not just boards, but councils.
Great, so just so I can make sure I'm hearing anything ready here today, we've got a document in front of us. If we proceed with what Dr. Carol is, um, letting us hear, we picked it, we've already picked our top three. We have an opportunity to come back on December fourth to be able to craft more specific questions or fine-tune some of the top three that you already come back with us based on the, the selection that we make on that day. So I think we have an opportunity to kind of meet with Mr. Jordan when speaking and be more specific. We have an opportunity to do that in a, in a session, a closed session with the, the board in itself. But I think that, uh, I know we were going in rewriting some things down there, and so if we go with the suggested, unless there's something that you're burning that, that we want to add into the pool there, um, let us just move forward with that. Is there any objection to doing that?
I might add one other suggestion to address the issue that Mr. Jordan had and others. After the board president asks the first question, and then leading into the board member's individual question, the board president can routinely say to the candidate, now you're going to get a series of questions from the board. Please answer these questions with specific examples from your experience as to the successes and/or failures that you experienced under each of those categories or each of those areas. This way, it's getting right to the point in terms of what you're saying. And this way, you don't have to tweak every one of these questions, because you're saying that right out front in terms of consistency.
And if they don't do it, then the, then the person who's asking the question could say, would you give me specific examples to make sure they do? And these people are all going to be trained to do that anyway, because that's what all administrators do. The administrators know, and they've gone through a whole series of administrative interviews as they've gone up the ladder, and they're always asked. You go, if you don't walk in the door with any examples of what you've done, you, you're not going to get the job anyway.
Exactly.
And they know that.
Okay, so.
Does that make more sense if we just?
Yeah, it did, it definitely connect for me on December fourth.
Gives us some more time, and I, I agree with Mr. Jordan says.
It was a good concern.
Yeah, I mean, no, I'm, I'll just, I'll flow in, okay.
We're all supporting you.
No, no, I'm not, I don't, I'm, it's, it's not, uh, personally, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that, because even as we were going through the six, so, some of the other possible questions, like I, you know, um, you know, why are you leaving your current position?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have that.
Talk to us about the superintendent as the coach of a governance team.
Yeah.
In your current, uh, environment, do you have, uh, teachers' associations or teacher unions? How do, would you work with our teacher and principal associations? The school board has adopted accountability plan. Can you describe whether or not you have any experience with accountability plans? Talk about your success with, uh, budget and finance, and, and, you know, those types of things. You know, what are your personal strengths and weaknesses? Those were just some questions that, that was one of those, that I just think like.
And I think those, those are some, some good questions.
All legitimate questions.
All, and, but I think the, like that budget and finance one, could that fit within the last page on number five, finance?
I, I included it there, because that was one of the additions, because I, I saw that there wasn't a direct question about that.
Which one was that?
Oh, actually, I put it under six, the budgeting, budgeting, yeah.
Budgeting, fill out the criteria, but it's important.
And if I could go, I'm sorry, go ahead, my, if I could go back to something you said earlier, um, that I wanted to address, and that was that you said something about, uh, interviews being an hour. Generally, interviews, you allow two hours for superintendent interviews. So what we're trying to do, and these, we could ask a million questions, that'd be great, but we don't have the time to do that. So what we're trying to do is frame it down to ask the right questions, so that you get the right information that you're seeking to get within that two-hour period of time, keeping each question within a timeframe, so that we're meeting timeframe. We're meeting questions you want to ask, so you're getting the information that you want from these candidate. That's our attempt in trying to do this. We're not trying to dictate or say, these questions you must ask. These are suggestions pulled from a lot of different places, but these are your questions. You, you want them to address what, how it's going to affect your district. I get that. So it's not offensive to us for you to change a question, strike a question, add a question. That's all great. Mr. Jordan had some great questions, but you have to keep in mind, you're going to be limited on the number of questions you can actually ask. So, and that's why I said earlier, there may be some questions you want to combine some, you know, this asked a good question, this asked a good question, but they might fit well together. So think, keep that in mind, that you could say, first part of the question is this, second part of the question is that. And believe me, candidates, and those of you who have gone through it, note, superintendents, candidates for the superintendent are going to be sitting here with a pen in their hand. And as you're saying that, they're going to jot down notes that will help them remember what your question was, so.
And this is more for the board, similar to what Mr. Jordan was saying. Most of the questions that I chose, what I also would like to hear from any candidate is challenges that they had and how they overcame those challenges.
Yep, yeah.
So it, it seems for me, every question, they should be able to provide us some difficulty that they had in their position, how they overcame that, and how did it improve the district as a whole. And those are the type answers we need to be able to make a decision if they would be able to do something similar for us.
Got it, especially when we look at the challenges. I mean, one of our clear community questions was, you know, what challenges you may expect coming in as superintendent?
Just quick, because I, I would support, you know, Ms. Martin mentioned, you know, can we go through this as was originally intended and maybe see where we are?
Where we end up?
Yeah.
I was trying to circle back there.
Well, I'll just say that, well, I think what, part of the challenge is, I think if we do that first without rewording, we can get through it, but if we reword by section, then I don't think we ever.
And that's why I wanted to go back to, because we're going to have the opportunity on December fourth to get a little bit more detailed. So, um, let's just go through. We've got, um, let's see if we can try to get that done by twelve, um, if we just go through each one of the criterias and so. We've got, um, let's see if we can try to get that done by twelve, um, if we just go through each one of the criterias and so... So I mean, honestly, if we're sitting and not really making any changes, going through...
We don't know till we ask.
Got it, so what, so what did you want me to do with that one again? So just going each sentence?
I think what you were doing.
What I was doing before?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, so let's just do that again. So number, we're on number two?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so how many people selected number two?
Only, oh.
Criteria one.
Three.
By criteria one, number two. Okay, so it doesn't meet four, so we're just gonna keep...
Well, we'll have six present.
We're not gonna be, well, yeah.
Go ahead, six present. Oh, shucks.
Yeah. It's gonna be three.
That's right, you're missing her, you're missing her.
And we're missing, um, okay, so let's put a asterisk next to it, cause I don't know Dr. Gabriel.
We should just put the number of the votes.
So we just keep it at three.
Yeah, I'm just putting the number of votes next to it.
We had what, four for the first one?
So we had three on that one?
Zero on the first one.
Zero on the first one.
Zero on the first one.
Right.
And number two?
No, we didn't have zero on the first one, cause I've voted for the first one.
Oh, then we had one.
And we have one, and I want my one vote down there.
You need to raise your hand.
Everybody put a one. A one.
All right.
That's the three.
Okay, here we go, number four.
Okay.
Oh, three.
We're on three.
I'm sorry. All right, three, threes messed me up. So number three, could we have two? All right, number four? Oh, there's, remember correction, you know, number three has three, four has, number four, one. Two, is that two, Ms. Smith?
Wait, 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 wait.
Number four.
Number four, okay.
Question four.
Mm-hmm.
How many people are going for question four? Mr. Jordan, okay, one. All right, question number five. Got two.
Oh, my gosh, you're getting carried out.
Taking it over, question number six.
Wait, 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 question number six? Oh, not, not the way that it's written.
Well, I mean, as a question, we can work, so...
I reworded it like this.
Is it one that you were interested in?
Yeah.
Okay.
The cost impact on the lives of high poverty and not grade level proficient students, is how I see that.
That's not what I, yeah, that's still not what I, but anyway.
So, if we could wordsmith it later, would you still go with that one, but not in the deficit type?
Cause we don't like failing and at risk.
You can, you can just reword that and say the lives of all students.
And all.
Yeah, but we wanted to emphasize, I think, failing, what, students who are not on grade level.
But there's four. Yeah, but it...
Either way, I wanted it.
Okay, so I'm gonna put three down here and a possible maybe...
One, two, three, four, I think, weren't you one of that?
It's too vague, right, the way it's written right now.
All right, so we'll keep it three.
I thought we were, um, selecting them with the understanding that we could reword later.
Right, yeah.
So, like this one, the intent of it I was okay with, but...
Because you still have to take in, I mean, Dr. Gabriel's, so it may, that might be one she selects as well.
She's not here, so she's not here.
I mean, I know, but...
She's not here, yeah. She's not arguing.
Otherwise, let's wait, we're gonna do it again.
All right, here we go.
I know where she is.
Everybody come back in, question number seven.
Oh, seven.
Who picked seven? Anybody? All right, question number eight? All right, we've got one. Question number nine? Okay, zero. All right, let's go ahead.
So question nine, what is the homework? What? And the number nine question says, following the completion of your homework regarding all, so what was the homework?
All the research that they researched.
The research of the district?
We're assuming they didn't.
Well, they don't, shouldn't come if they didn't do it.
Additive number three.
Adjunctive number three? Okay, so everyone, um, Ms. Smith is number three, so now it's gonna be four.
We have questions two, three, and six.
So that is proof of exactly what we were trying to do, that you have identified the three questions that you wanna start with the basis of. And, and remember, this is a building block. This is like building a house. Remember, we started with the criteria, you, you guys built that that night we were in here, you put that together, we have six of those. Now we're trying to build off of that. What's the next step? The next step is narrow it to three, then you can take it from those three and make it what you want it to be.
So that's what y'all were gonna do anyway?
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't even need to be doing it.
So you've got two, three, and six, and if you just have ideas for rewording six, we can do that quickly and then move on.
But are we, but I, I'm confused again. So, so is, Dr. Carroll, are you saying that this is what y'all were gonna do for us?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, is we were gonna tally these, and once we have everybody's information, we're gonna tally who's your top three. Here's the top three questions you're gonna, we're gonna start with. At that point, wordsmith them, add to, delete from, whatever you wanna do with them. But that's a, that's a basis, it's just a baseline for us to start with, for you to start with, for it to be your question. And again, you may get to December fourth and go, hey, we voted for that, I don't like that one now, let's, let's change it or eliminate it.
Or add a different one.
Or add a different one, whatever you choose to do.
Maybe the different ones could be the ones that are candidate specific.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Can you, as, as we go through each criteria, can you at the end just summarize what ended up being the top three?
We just said, we just said we didn't need to do that.
From what I counted, you have questions two, three, and six is the top three, with six being reworded
Okay.
in terms of particularly failing and at risk. When you said summarize, are you talking about read the question?
No, 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 I just meant, just tell us at the end what the top, cause there's a lot of interjection.
So what are we doing?
So this is the thing, yeah, so let's just, since we've finished criteria one, essentially, what we just did is what our consultants would have done for us. They would have taken this back and given us the top three. Um, based on that, um, do you all want them to take this back and for them to finish this? Or do we wanna go through each criteria?
No, you know it.
I mean, now you guys see what we're trying to do, cause they're gonna give us our top three back, and so just like the number six was in there and we wanna reword it, they're gonna send that back to us and then we can reword it.
Right, okay.
And then we'll come back on December fourth. Everybody cool with that?
That's correct.
Yep.
All right, so now we've kinda done this exercise, we know it's about to happen.
Yeah.
We can go ahead and...
I accept that if that's the direction the board wants to go, but I find value in going through and hearing, uh, what the board feels, but I'm fine if that's the case.
But we'll know what the board feels when we get the report back.
I'm saying, just like the exchange that we had earlier was helpful to me.
Yeah.
Uh, that's all.
But I'm not saying, don't do it. I'm gonna say, so if we got, you have to proceed.
Thirty minutes.
So, okay, no, no, I'm, I'm just, I wanna be fair on this. So if we say limit ourselves thirty minutes, we get done by twelve, let's go through, now we know how, what we're doing, I'm gonna do the same thing.
So we're just raising our hand.
Criteria two.
Okay, so...
Can I just ask one question maybe? Can you just give us a couple of the phrases in terms of the change in six? So we maybe...
Yes.
No, I don't want us to change it, they're gonna change it.
Oh, you're gonna change it?
We're gonna come back and say, these are the three you picked, we're gonna give them back to you, and you all can change them. We're not, we're not...
Okay, so you're gonna change six.
I'm not gonna try to take, no offense to any of you, I'm gonna try to take what Mr. Jordan thinks on number one and what Ms. Smith thinks or...
So they're gonna do that when we give them the three.
That's right, we're gonna give it back to them and they'll do the wordsmithing, not us.
So we can go to criteria two.
Be specific to the candidates.
So criteria two, question number one. All right, we have two. No, three?
Yeah.
All right, question number two? Oh, hold on, I gotta keep, say, question two again? All right, so that's three, I gotta keep adding myself.
Yeah, I was gonna say, make sure you count yourself.
All right, question number three.
We're in here.
All right, we have four. Question number four. We have five.
That's the top, but you don't know.
All right, question number five. Zero?
Oh.
Whoa, no one? All right.
Don't forget yourself.
I don't have any more, question number six? All right, we have three. So we, so that one is...
So we actually need her, her, her vote, or her vote, her sheet.
Strategic rank's so important, yeah.
Well, be the tiebreaker, I don't know.
No, 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 I broke it on number one, it's four.
Oh, four is, okay, okay, all right, I didn't hear that, I apologize.
So you got one, three, and four.
Wait, number one is four?
Yeah, cause I voted myself, I forgot to count myself at first.
Three and four.
Well, raise your hand.
I did, I changed it on the sheet, so one, three, and four, okay, for criteria two?
Those are the ones I had, I did better on this one than the last one.
Let's go to criteria number three, question number one. All right, zero, question number two. One?
Look at your sheet.
I'm looking. Question number three? All right, that's five, I counted myself. Question number four? That's two, counted myself. Question number five? That's two, counted myself. Question number, now this jumped off, I'm gonna call the number that's here, so it's question number seven.
Oh, I apologize, I just saw that.
It's okay, question number seven, that's one. Question number eight? Zero, question, oh, one. Tony, you delay.
I, cause I, cause I re...
Are you rereading them?
I'm, okay, take, take, take mine, take mine out, cause it's actually later on anyway, so...
So zero and number eight?
Yeah, I think I reworded it before I looked at the rest.
Question number nine? All right, counting two?
That's where we get our money.
Question number ten, ten. Counting one.
Ooh, this is all local, I didn't choose any of them.
You didn't choose any of them?
Didn't like those questions on.
All right, so we have...
I didn't either.
Oh, there's a tiebreaker here.
Best criteria for us to be superintendent.
Yeah, so obviously, question number three.
Yeah, I think that's a little hard one.
Got it.
So with this tiebreaker, can we present them back to us and we vote on those two?
If the tiebreaker is broken by Noel, we wouldn't have to do that.
But we're here now.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying, Ms. Smith, so let's just go ahead and do that then.
All right, which one are we back on?
So number three is already in there, so the tiebreakers are four, five, and nine, and I'll restate the question. So number four, how do you as a superintendent maintain a high level of visibility within the district and continue to do your job effectively? We have two votes. Is there anybody wanna join that one?
Just explain to me the three that you say are, that we're trying to break.
Number four, number five, number nine.
And we're trying to narrow that from three to two?
So what I would suggest is you reread those questions, four, five, and nine, and then pick two of those three, since we only have one narrowed down, right? So pick two, and so go back through the tallying again and say, how many do you think? Number four, number five, or number nine, but only vote twice, please, and that'll help, that'll help eliminate that, maybe.
Since I didn't vote before, can you just clarify, we have two that we've chosen, we're trying to choose the third?
No, we have one we've chosen.
And the one that we've chosen is which one?
Number three.
Three.
Number three.
But honestly, if Mr. Jordan just voted...
Besides, you're right.
I didn't like the pool of the, I didn't like the pool of candidates.
No pressure, no pressure.
So now we got four, five, and nine, and we can each vote on two?
Got it.
Okay. Let's do a minority, I don't know.
Okay.
Can I just have a, state something generally with these questions? Is stakeholders, I don't, I try to avoid naming who the important stakeholders are. I want them to tell me who they think the important stakeholders are. So I think you see which one I don't support, because it explicitly says that they're stakeholders and it seems like they should know that coming in.
We can reword it.
Right. I'm just saying.
All right, let's vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so going back again, uh, question number four? Okay, that's four. Question number five? That's four?
Boy.
I didn't help a bit, did it? Well, go ahead and do it.
Question number nine? It's two.
Well, yes, it did help, okay.
Okay.
So four, four, and five.
Well, I mean, they're the two, they're the top, it's two of them. That'll give us our top three.
Yep.
Three, four, five.
Three, four, and five, right?
Yep.
I have suggestions for rewording.
No, I said they'll give us our top three, four, and five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, gives us a top, I'm, I thought that it was a tie, I apologize.
I mean, it...
It was a tie until we voted again.
I just wanna point out that question number nine, we don't even ask that about the school board.
Yeah. Well, I like question number nine, cause that's where all the money comes from.
Yeah, but they need to be able to come to that conclusion on their own if they're...
But I, I reworded that one, and that was why I liked it.
Yeah, but that's okay, I'll accept the fact.
All right, we've got...
But I like that one, I like number nine.
Twenty-five minutes, so criteria number four? All right, question number one?
I'm gonna reword it.
Yeah, I've gotta reword it too.
I know.
Question number two?
But I'll remember that.
Question number two?
But number two is worded too narrowly.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I did too, I have, I have a recommendation.
You have a recommendation on that?
But is that something we'll talk about on the fourth?
Do we have any, yeah, we could, but...
All right.
Question number three? All right, we've got three? Question number four?
Superintendent level question, that's a principle of question.
Question number five?
Oh, yeah.
I reworded it.
Okay, that's six of us?
That's the biggest vote area.
Number six? Question six?
I reworded that whole thing.
We had a one, and we had a reword.
Superintendent level question.
One, three, and five.
Mm-hmm, okay.
One, three.
All right.
Which ones, one, three, three, and five?
One, three, and five. So looking at criteria number five?
So, wait, so if there are additions
Yeah.
we're not talking about, I'm just reiterating.
We'll come back at the end.
Come back at the end, all right.
Cause there are those additional questions also at the end, too. I have additional questions for that, but, okay.
So criteria number five, question number one?
I think this is a good one for all.
This will be, this will be six.
Can I make a, a quick legal comment about question number one?
All right.[1510.61]
Just because in my experience in dealing with superintendents that come from other states, they often are not familiar with Virginia law with regard to the role of school board and superintendent. So, it might be useful in the final form to maybe preface that with something along the lines of, given the fact that only the school board can hire, fire, and in general make serious personnel decisions. As you see it, what is the role of, because I've had, I've had acting superintendents that came from other states and had been working here for a while that I had to explain to them that the personnel agenda is not a mere formality, that in fact the superintendent cannot hire people, that all they can do is ask the school board to hire them. And the same is true, of course, with general, any serious personnel decisions, only the school board can do it. So, it might be useful in asking them this question to make sure that they understand that the school board cannot delegate the function of managing any kind of serious personnel matters solely to the superintendent, just to avoid misunderstandings on the part of the applicants. So, anyway, that's my brief comment.
I've got a big start next here, and I vote stuff, Mr. Jordan.
Well, I, I don't disagree in terms of that being something that maybe gets teased out, but I think what this question is really trying to get to is understanding governance roles and responsibilities at a high level. We may need to get to something to that specific, but I wouldn't want us to hone in on a personnel legalistic piece when I think it's more in terms of who has responsibility for day-to-day operations, who sets policies, those types of things.
Okay, I made a note next to what Mr. Kyle was mentioning, and I understand what Mr. Jordan's saying, Ms. Smith, but is that in line with what you were going to ask about, or just get back on time?
Yeah.
Okay, got you. So, we have six on question number one. Question number two. All right, we have three. All right, question number three. Question number three. Okay, I'm seeing two. Question number four? Number three. Keep it going, myself.
Well, number three, kind of picking back on what Attorney Kyle said earlier, so in, in some states, the, the board president has special roles and responsibilities. In Virginia, there's no special roles and responsibilities, so I think that might need to be teased out as well.
Well, when we meet on the fourth, Jack would be there with us to remind us of these.
Well, I'm not speaking to Jack at all, I'm just saying that the way it is written, separating out one member from the other members gives the impression that there's something, we all know that the board chair has.
It's whatever the board determines to give certain rights to the board chair, and I would change it anyway from president because we have a board chair and that's the terminology we use in the comments anyway, for the most part.
Right, I just wanted to point out that in some states, the, like in some areas, you know, the, the mayor is also the chair of the board, those types of things.
And there's a treasurer and all this other stuff, it's weird stuff. So, let's just, question three, good point, question three has three votes on it, okay? Question number four. Question four, all right, that's zero. Question five. I'm seeing one, question five, all right, that's one. Question number six.
Absolutely.
Six has six, all right.
So, what was that, six?
Break a tie between two and three.
We've got a tie, don't we?
Two and three.
Two and three, yeah. Well, isn't six?
So, you got one and six that are in.
Okay, and then you got two and three.
Yes.
All right.
Run it back through.
Well, let's just vote.
All right, here we go, so we're going to go back to number, question number two and question three. So, question two. All right, I'm showing four. Question number three.
The fours have it.
Are you trying to point out that I lost on that vote?
It's math.
Questions, I just like how number two is worded, so we can always come back on them.
All right, so.
What'd you guys have? One, two, and six.
One, two, and six, all right. Criteria number six, question number one. All right, and that's three. And I wordsmithed that one too, y'all. Question number two. All right, I see three. Question number three. All right, that's three. Question four.
I'm almost there, wait.
You're almost there. Question number four.
Oh, not four, not four.
Zero, all right. Question number five.
Boy, Christine and I are.
Four.
Obviously copying me, I can't be copying her.
Question number six. Criteria six. Question number six, zero, all right, so what do we got?
You got five in and then one, two, and three, you have to vote for two.
Sucks, okay. We've got a three-way tie.
All right.
Well, you know, number two is. In criteria three, I mean, number two is also, I hope we didn't pick it for criteria three, which is number three is the same thing. I've got, I've marked down as a duplicate three, three with, with question number two.
Criteria three, number three?
Yeah, did we pick that one?
Which criteria, three?
Criteria three, number three.
Yeah, we did.
And the same question again. If I went back and checked, I thought I've already read that one, so we've already actually picked that.
Based on what you know about North Public Schools at this time? What would you, would be some of the first action you move forward and improve the relationship, and which one you seeing that one is?
And I, and that's the same as number two, how would you establish positive public relations with the district and the community? It's the same thing.
Oh, okay.
So, we've already picked it once.
All right, I'm with that.
All right, so we can take number two out, so just between number one and number three?
So, that would give you one, three, and five.
So, we already got it.
Okay. One, three, and five.
Adding achievement gaps in number five, but we're not. Did you put achievement gaps in this one? I bet you did, huh?
What did Ms. Smith say?
Wow.
I feel like, I feel like number three is hedging and. It's a, I mean, because it's a pers, it's.
It's ill-defined.
Yeah, that's what I.
You talking about that one?
Yeah.
Because it says a perceived gap, but there's no perceived by whom.
Right, exactly.
But we can reword that.
I can tell you right now.
Don't we have the top three?
The candidate.
Exactly.
The candidate has to be able to speak to the perception.
Right.
So, unless we are providing some.
She has to understand it, she or he has to understand it, examine, assess.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think it's a good question, I voted for it.
I didn't say it wasn't a good question, I said it needs to be better defined.
Right.
Under criteria.
Was that zero?
Zero.
Yeah, that's already done anyway.
So, the top three are one, three, and five.
Right. Knowing that number two has already been covered, because that was marked.
So, are we on number seven, though?
No, we're on the other possible questions.
Other possible questions, that's what I meant.
Oh, we get five votes.
So.
So, can we go backwards then? From criteria six, but, I mean, anyway, go do it however you.
To include, what were you saying?
Oh, ignore me, just.
No, that's okay, so now we're going to be the other possible questions. And, so Dr. Gabriel is joining us now, she's selecting her top five. Does anybody have an objection for her adding on this last additional possible question to be included in what we were doing?
Say it again, what are we doing now?
She's going to participate on the, the last page, and then we can go back, so I'm just trying to. So, other possible questions, all those who voted for question number one. That's three, because I see Dr. Gabriel's paper.
How were you in school when you needed answers for a test, Mr. Cotton?
How dare you? All right, question two.
I'm sorry, was that three or four?
Three. Question number two, transportation. Okay, zero. Question number three. One, two, three, four, five, all right, five on number three. Question number four, community partnerships. I see two. Question number five, finance, of course. All right, two.
Without the money, you can't have the rest of it.
That's true.
Yeah, but the, the way it's worded, it implies that the superintendent is passive in the process. The superintendent's not passive in the process.
And my, my others don't have the superintendent being passive.
Got it.
Right, I agree, because he's the person writing the thing.
Question number six, compensation.
I really, this was my teacher raised one.
So, I see.
But actually, compensation and finance can be combined into one, but.
Can we vote to combine those two?
But I have a suggestion.
Ms. Smith.
Never mind, I mean, we can talk about that afterwards, but I'm raising my hand for number six.
Okay, so let me just get that count for number six.
Because that's your teacher raised, this teacher raises and narrows.
Anybody else on number six on the side? Okay, so that's five. Five on six, all right, so let's look at question number seven, academic gaps. That's one, two, three, four, five, and one, two, three, four, four.
Academic distress list.
I know, I don't like that.
That's ESSO, that's ESSO, that's what I put down, it's ESSO.
Question number eight, priorities. One, two, three, four, where are you at? I didn't count you. Going to number seven, put five. Number eight, everybody up for eight, one, two, three, four. All right, and question number nine, facilities and planning, and that's a seven. That's all of us. All right.
So, what are the top five?
Three, five, seven, eight, nine.
Three.
Not safety?
Three, five, seven, nine. How many voted on five, number five?
You said five? Oh, I'm sorry, not five, no, no. It's one, it's one, three, six, seven, nine.
So, it's one, six, I thought we were picking five.
No, one, three, six, seven, and nine are the top, are our top ones.
One, three, six, seven, nine. One, three, six.
Okay.
So, that's the four. I know.
Wait a minute, hold on.
We're not going.
Well, I feel like if we do the.
I'm the same on that one.
All right, so question, everybody, so question one, I have three, question two, I have zero, question three, I have five, question four, I have two, question five, I have two, question si.
I want to change my finance one to compensation.
We're talking about.
Oh, it's okay, it's only two.
We could.
Doesn't matter.
Mine does, I have arrows to both of them.
Question five now has one, question six has six, question seven has five, question eight has four, and question nine has seven.
That's correct, still the same ones.
Still the same.
There's no branding.
So, what was that? I'm sorry.
One, three, six, seven, nine.
No working branding.
Six, seven, nine. All right, cool.
Potential combining five and six.
Branding, that's something that has to be.
At this point, we have the framework of what you guys want to ask, based on the six criteria and the quote other questions. Again, I've said this a number of times, these are your questions, you can change them, rearrange them, wordsmith them, but that's up to you all, what our intent is to take these back and format those in a way, we send them back to you, whether it's through Ms. Campson or whoever, so you all get it, so you all can take some time to work on these. I would suggest you not wait till December the fourth, because that would be a, could possibly turn into a long meeting. If you could do some of that and come to some agreement before that time.
By Thanksgiving.
So, we have another meeting in Thanksgiving, so if we, and I know Dr. Gabriel, so if we let them give us a report back, and which will come through Ms. Campson, that'll give us some time to kind of digest, rewrite some things down there, and then we could build some time in to kind of fill, to kind of figure this out before the fourth, Dr. Gabriel.
Well, it'll have to be on a off day.
I'll just immediately send it right out, even before I read the table, so they get it right away.
So, you're proposing that we put a meeting on the calendar?
Oh, we're going to, is this the only meeting we have this month?
Yeah. That's why we're here all day all night.
That's why we are here for twelve days.
This is why we're celebrating our twelve-plus hour meeting.
So, I'm not suggesting doing anything illegal, I'm just saying.
No, 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 it's not.
Oh, no, no, we can schedule a meeting as long as we have time to announce it.
And we want to be collaborative with the questions that we're, we're building. But I think what, what we, what we do is we receive the, the questions that you all give us. And then Ms. Campson will then distribute them to everyone, and then we'll, we'll take it from there. You know, we might all agree and say we're thumbs up, or we might have some, some slight tweets, but I don't think right now we need to plan for an additional meeting between now and Thanksgiving in order to rehash the questions right now. Unless, unless you all want to put a date on the books.
We could have it.
There, legally, I mean, if we did a document that was track changes with our suggestions from each board member so we could visually see that, we could do that and it still becomes a public document, right?
Yes.
So, we could do a track change Google Docs amongst the board on the list down there with our suggestions so we'd all see it, and then when we come in on December fourth, we've had time to di- digest it and then kind of move forward with it.
What about all, you know, we, we have nine to twelve on the fourth with the search form, and that's, that's a really important meeting for us because we'll be looking at the videos and the applications to get down to choose our finalists, so we'll need probably every second of that, but what if the board came in an hour earlier at eight to make sure the questions are kind of set? No?
Well, we're going to.
Or we could stay afterwards when they leave at twelve and do it.
We're going back to what Ms.
Because that's going to be our only time to get the questions together.
We're going back to what Mr. Jordan was saying, we may, another portion of looking at the fourth is that based on what we see from the finalists and the applicants, we might want to tweak the questions that we have.
So, that's what I'm saying.
So, maybe we, we might come in earlier, I don't know what it does for the parents.
No, we need to come in later, or if, if it's nine to twelve and we're going to choose our finalists during that nine to twelve law, then maybe according to this, we don't have, we go nine to twelve and then our work session starts at four, so we could have lunch and come back an hour earlier at three.
Look at questions and just finalize those.
And look at the questions, because we have to have them finalized, because, you know, the, we've only got then the week of the sixteenth is when we'll be doing the interviews.
And once those are finalized, we have to send those, I have to send those to our corporate office because they put those in the packets to the, to the interviewees, so to speak.
On the fourth?
So, I'm sorry, Ms., Dr. Gabriel, so if we look at the fourth, we've got to look at interviews from nine to twelve. Ms. Campson's proposing that we come back after lunch, because we've got time before our closed session at four, and we can do and tweak the final questions between that time, based on now that we've seen our finalists, we've narrowed it down, we've got that information, now we can base our questions, like what you were asking about, more specific, and do that between.
Yeah, because we don't have another board meeting before we start the interviews on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Or can't we tweak the questions during the closed session?
No.
Based on.
Yeah.
Based on.
That's what I thought he said.
Have finished, go ahead.
Based on the individual candidates and what we see in their resume, so then it is specific to the candidates, how we tailor our questions.
Which is true, we could always make that one to three or two, whatever we're saying, a closed session to do that as well. I just don't want to, I, I would think with, with Dr. Gabriel looking, if we waited to four and let's just say we needed more time.
Oh, I wouldn't wait till four.
Then we would be butting up against that.
Do it right after.
So, we could do it right after and do food and do a close session.
Just have a working lunch.
We have another day like today.
Right. But it'd be focused on these questions.
Yep, and the questions, so Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan, I know that you had raised it up earlier, do you think, what are your comments on that? You think we'll be able to kind of meet some of the things that you were raising?
I think so, yeah, I had a different question based upon what Dr. Carroll just said, I just want to make sure, when you finish.
And I'm sorry, and, and at this point in time, I'm going to turn things back over to Dr. Gabriel.
Are you tired?
I'm sorry, no, Mr. Jordan got a question, I'm turning it over.
Oh, I see how it is.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so just so that we are fully prepared, we are going to announce that we will have our session with, with you all in the morning, right, and we're saying that that's from nine to.
Twelve.
Nine to twelve.
And that's a closed session, because we'll be looking at specific applications and videos.
So, nine to twelve closed session, and we'll need a motion for that, and then going from twelve, let's say twelve to two, working lunch.
We continue, we continue the closed session.
Yeah. Yeah, well, wouldn't we?
Because we're.
I'm just thinking about a conflict that I have at twelve.
Okay.
Which, we don't have to stop anything from me, but I can come back in.
Okay, so we're just going to continue, so we would need to have the motion appropriately written so that it encompasses us discussing the questions as it pertains to the candidates that we have.
Each finalist.
Okay, and we'll say that's from twelve to two, we'll give us twelve to two.
Yeah, and then we can all.
And then we will break, and then our work session will start at four.
Sounds good to me.
Or we could just go right into the work session and come out early.
Yeah, but we still have to, don't we have the, is, is it just a work session?
Oh, it is.
So, yeah, why don't we just let y'all get out earlier then?
Yeah, imagine getting out before dark.
Work session, but either way.
That's actually a good idea.
I don't, I don't know if that works with everyone's schedule, it would? Would that work with everyone's schedule if we start the work session?
I think the staff would be appreciative.
Now, boy, they would be very appreciative.
Well, then, let me, let me, let me propose this idea to Dr. Birdsong and make sure that she doesn't have any other conflicts, because she might, and then I will come back to you all, Ms. Tanner, if you can help me with the logistics of that. But for right now, nine to twelve, with you all, you all are leaving, and then it will be board from twelve to two, and then we'll determine if we can piggyback on that and do our work session from two to four.
That'd be great.
Or if we need to stick with our four to six-thirty normal times for work session.
Okay.
Okay?
So, if we're tweaking the questions, we're just sending them back to you.
Ms. Tanner is going to make sure that all the logistics are taken care of.
Getting the questions for the finalists, are we just sending it to you, or are you all a part of that process like we're doing now?
We don't have to be, or we can be, whichever you choose to do, we're just trying, what I need is that final document, and, and let me go back to what I said earlier about twenty-five questions, you may determine that's too many. You may say, hey, we just want two in each section, and that way you've got twelve questions plus the five extras plus the two others, so you don't have quite as many, but that, again, that's up to you all, whatever you choose to do. All I need is a final document, I send it back to our corporate office, and what they do is prepare packets for you all and send out for the interviews. So, they'll have the final questions in that packet and with the resumes and the information from the, your three finalists, we put that together and we send it back to you.
Cool.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, at first I thought you were saying that the candidates were getting the questions, and that's what I needed.
No, sir.
No, no, no.
The board members get the questions to ask the candidates.
We're good.
I may have misspoken, sorry.
We're good, no, I probably misheard, I just, that's why I need to get clarity.
So, we need to give these two.
Yes, please.
Back to y'all.
Pass those back to.
Just pass them down.
Us. Or rip, well. No.
I'm writing my name more than sleep.
Wait a second.
So, let me ask this question, we normally take those, I take them with us, but some of you made some notes on there.
Yeah, we did.
I, I have, I have no problem with you keeping what you have, so you have your notes of what you, I have no problem with that, just be careful with these. We have the numbers for questions. We have them.
Okay.
We have what we need, if you want to keep those, that's fine, just, I would just ask you not to distribute that.
And I just want to throw this out there, because Dr. Gabriel is going to complete hers, and so her numbers, if her number in any way changes any of those numbers down there, are we all fine with that? She's not looking at it, she doesn't know, but she's.
Wait, what are you saying?
No, what are you saying?
She didn't vote in any of the stuff, and so she's turning her sheet in.
Can't redo it. We're not, if we're gonna redo it, we do it as a whole.
Get the final, I think, I agree.
She's good.
So, hers will just be counted for the other one.
Player, we're team.
She's gonna be the silent chair in this particular one.
Well, there's still opportunity for input to add questions.
I have additions, so additions, we'll do that too later.
Yep. When I send, when I send this formatted back to you, you all will take that.
December 4th, we got two hours for that.
So, I'm gonna recap.
I've still got yours.
I'm gonna recap. This is important so that we all are on the same page with what's going on. These questions, we are handing them back over to you. You are gonna take them and it-
No, we just changed them.
The questions, we have, we have them.
They have them already.
Okay, so, you are gonna assemble the feedback that the board has given to you with regards to the question. You are gonna send that back to us.
That's correct.
And then we are going to individually look at it, review it, and provide our feedback. We are gonna come back on December the 4th. We are gonna meet with you from nine to 12, closed session. From 12 to two, the board is going to further discuss modifications to the questions as it pertains to the candidates that we have seen and customize it basically. And-
Then we're ready to go.
Then we're ready to go. And then you will tell us, you will tell us what the expectations are going forward with the questions that we do from 12 to two. You'll tell us how we need to give them to you and et cetera. Are we all good with that?
I do have one, I guess from a legal perspective. It goes back to asking questions of individual candidates. Can they actually do that? We've always suggested that you ask the same questions to all the candidates. I don't have a problem with tweaking it so it's directed to one, but you almost have to ask that same question to all of them. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking at.
Not individual questions, individual candidates.
Might be one that we tweak and we want to ask the same question across the board all three.
It may apply to only one, but they all need to be asked that question.
I agree.
Okay, I'm clear.
That's it, I'm not.
I have a question.
You're not clear or don't agree with that?
He had a question.
I don't know.
So, what if, but what if a candidate has a very unique experience and you want them to share a little bit about that experience?
You can ask us extra questions.
You can ask that, okay.
Yeah, so you can ask the base, you have the base questions.
Remember what Dr. Ferry said? You could ask in the beginning, if you have specific, and please give us specific incidents, experiences, or things that you've been working with boards, however you want to say that in the beginning is what applies to all the questions. I want you to be very specific to your unique experiences and your unique situations.
Right, and that, that can be a statement made in the beginning. And another, for instance, when Mr. Jordan, one of your questions was why, why are you considering leaving your current position? That could actually be folded into the first question that the board chair asks.
I had that right there.
Please tell us about where you are and, and why is it that you want to leave where you are to come to Norfolk? So, there's ways to get those questions into these.
Yeah, but even with that as an example, I think it, it can vary. If you have someone who is a sitting superintendent, their scenario might be different than someone who's not.
Yeah.
They can each answer it in that way, right? And what's unique to them.
Right, but what I was, I'm, was going where I think Dr. Gabriel was going. I understand the process of asking, this process we went through, that'll be questions that we would ask of everyone. But if we end up with, you know, three finalists and someone has expertise in one area, somebody has expertise in another, somebody has something else, why wouldn't we ask an individual to elaborate on their specific experience and work that may not apply to another candidate?
And that's a, that's a legal cloud, a question, Mr. Cloud?
My answer is that you can do that.
Yeah. Our, our suggestion is that you ask the same questions to every candidate. But from a legal perspective, if he says that's fine, then y'all can do that.
I mean, we could almost have the standard questions and then in the follow-up questions, ask for the more specific to that particular person. Because then everyone's getting the same question, but then we're asking a follow-up that may ask for more detail. And that's something that we have to determine on the 4th between 12 and-
Because we shouldn't be surprised by someone popping at a question that we've not even heard before.
I think that-
I mean, I don't disagree, I just think that's the whole point of having individuals is being able to find out what the individual can bring to the table. Different individuals gonna bring different things. The other question I had, you, you said something about not distributing this. Can you elaborate on what you're, what you're saying?
Well, we're just, we want to be, we want to keep, not that these questions, again, are sacred or haven't been asked a thousand times other places. We just don't want people, matter of fact, my phone just rang a few minutes ago and it was a potential candidate. I would not give those-
Watching now.
I would not give those questions, no.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying.
These are recorded. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want individuals to receive the questions. Or they should, is all I'm asking.
But that was my question in the beginning because once we have had this in open session and discussed it.
Maybe I can clarify that these are public records.
It's a public document.
Anybody requests it, can have a copy. There is no duty to publish it.
Right.
The only duty is if, if someone formally requests it, you have to give them a copy. Now, if that person happens to be the newspaper, then, you know, what the newspaper will do would be different if John Smith.
But we should give them back to Dr. Carroll.
At this point, it's a public record. Giving it back will not defeat a FOIA request.
Correct.
It would just be a shame not to be able to get good, authentic answers.
I guess they don't lose it just in case we get that FOIA request. We return the question.
I think we return them.
I'll be happy to take them, but I know you've written on them, so that's why, that was my, uh-
You got mine.
I wrote my additional.
Well, that's the same thing as me having them, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, your notes.
Wrote my notes on them.
Yeah, okay. All right, so why don't we take a 10-minute break, grab some lunch, and then bathroom, and then we'll come back and we'll finish up.
Which that part may be very short, actually.
Well, except I do have two things the board has to decide on that I couldn't answer myself.
Can we take our break?
Yeah, because that's gonna lead into the decision, the board will affect that.
My understanding that the district will pay for the interview expenses for those finalists to come in. As far as moving expenses and the length of the contract, I don't think there's been discussion on that. We get those questions from candidates. And to this point, we said if that question has been asked, that we've not determined that yet. So, that just needs to be discussed and let us know. So, with that said, back to you.
Okay, is there, would anyone like to comment on those two particulars? The moving expenses or the length of the contract, Ms. Campson?
Well, I'd just say on the length of the contract, Virginia law prohibits it being shorter than two years or more than four for the initial contract.
It's, what, can you repeat that, please?
Under Virginia law, the initial contract can't be any shorter than two years and it can't be any longer than four.
All right, Campson?
Well, my recommendation is a three-year contract. If I lived away in another state, I don't think I would pull up and move for under three years. So, I think you might eliminate some people there. That's, that's just my feeling.
Dr. Gabriel?
I would recommend we address contract length and terms after we've decided on the candidate.
But what I'm hearing from Dr. Carroll is that this is a question that they typically ask, so.
Correct, and I agree with you specifically about the contract. I said this earlier. The intent, the intent of the board is to offer a whatever, two, three, four-year contract. But I understand that's part of the negotiating process as well.
Saying this different from what I said. I'm just simply saying that letting the candidates know that we intend to negotiate and you can tell them what the law is in terms of no less than two and no more than four. But I think once the board has had an opportunity to do the interviewing and deciding on who the candidate is, what we may offer may very well depend upon the outcome of that process versus, versus a statement upfront.
I agree with that.
My, my view.
That won't affect the candidate's decision. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't have a negative effect on the candidate's decision. Oh, okay.
I don't think so. If they understand that's what's Virginia law.
Between two and four years.
But I do agree with you, Ms. Campson, that if it were me, it'd be difficult for me to relocate, move my family, and go through all that process for a two-year contract. I probably wouldn't do it. But that's completely up to you when you get to that point.
Right, but that, oh, okay. That, that individual, you know, we still are giving that range. So, I think that's something that could be negotiated. It doesn't preclude us from doing what, what you both are suggesting.
Sure.
I would like to come to a consensus on what we'd like to hear them say, though.
Well, that's, that was gonna be my next point.
So, we have something to compare it to.
Because it's going in the contract, potentially language, what they would have down there. I mean, we'll get to the contract later, but we're, do we need to take a vote? I just want to make sure that we're clear, so that we don't have anything. Or it would just be, or it's just to take a vote and then it just covers anything? If it's two, no more, no less, what is it, no less than two, no more than four? And then, and it's negotiable?
That's the law.
It is what it is.
That's the law.
Yeah, I mean, that's the law. You can't give them a contract of less than two or more than four years.
I would, I would support-
And you could just tell them that and-
But if we don't know what we want, then what? But I would support, I would support including that language for them so that they know. But I would say that ideally, our preference is for three years. I would support three years.
That's definitely my preference.
So, I feel, in my experience moving around, is that you, it takes two years just to really establish yourself. If we just say it's two to four years, I think it, I think it's too much of a blank space for them. But I think they, they need to hear from us that ideally, we're looking for three years and this is negotiable. So, are we com-
I mean, I'm in favor of three or, of three or more, well, three minimum.
Okay. Ms. Campson, I'm sorry, you say three. So, can we do a combined?
Well, what we did-
Yeah. Ms. Smith?
Well, I prefer stating what the law says that we have between two and four years and that it's negotiable with the candidate, the ultimate candidate. Because, well, and that's it. It's, it's negotiable as a part of the contract.
So, what I'm proposing is that we include the law, but we say ideally, we're looking for three years. But this is negotiable.
Yeah, because I don't want us to choose a finalist and then we get into a discussion over the two-year thing and then, and our finalists, I mean, not a finalist, but a superintendent. And then they're like, you know, I'm not, I'm not willing to move my family for two years. And, and plus in education, you always think of three years, three years to be able to make it.
I mean, realistically, would we bring somebody on for just two years? We're trying to stop the cycle of-
Yeah, I mean, how often did we see that?
Only if we're not paying attention to any of our comments. Right, exactly.
We're only discussing the two to four-year issue because it's been put before us to discuss it.
Right.
Right, so, we, the two to four year has come up because Attorney Cloud has just shared with us what the, um, what the law says. I don't think that there's anybody that had in their mind doing a two-year contract. But I'm saying we could decide three years, we could decide four years based upon the candidate. And I'm saying why would we even put any barriers on it or framing on it at this point when, when there's no need for us to do so?
Because, because I think to Adele's point and to Lauren's point and to Dr. Carroll's point, we do need to let them know that we are, that we are not just haphazardly going to choose between two and four. And I think it's more the two number than the four number that might have somebody wonder, okay, well, potentially, are they really gonna just sign me on for two years? So, I think that if we include the language and we say ideally, we're looking at three, but this is negotiable, they at least know we're looking for longer than two and that we're willing to negotiate up to four.
We, we are, the, the current deadline for applications is tomorrow.
We already have 10.
So, I'm not sure that I understand the context of having this discussion about this issue now. We could have had that discussion when we first put out the brochure. All I'm saying is, is that as I read the brochure previously, I thought that it was kind of clear that certain things would be negotiated. And it gives the, um, the candidate the opportunity to negotiate with us all kinds of terms. But I think you, we could even state what our history has been. But I just think we are creating an issue that we don't need to create.
Ms. Campson?
You know, when you're, when you're hiring people and you want to get the best people, it's really a two-way thing. It becomes a two-way thing at a, at a certain point. And I think certainly it will become a two-way thing when we go into our finalists so that not only are they coming and hoping to get a job from you, you, as the employer, are hoping that you're gonna get, you, in your mind, this is the person you want. And so, it really is a combination of recruiting and applying. So, there's a point at which it starts to shift because, you know, the best candidate is who you're gonna go after. And the best candidate may decide against you based on how much you seem to want them or be interested or what you're willing to offer them. I mean, I've hired a lot of people and this comes up a lot. So, you know, I'm just throwing that out there that you need to keep that in mind. I mean, when teachers came to interview with me, I had two interviews. You know, it depended on how much I wanted them, whether I gave, whether I gave them a nice courteous interview and sent them on their way or whether I kept them. I walked around the school with them, I introduced them to teachers, I introduced them to children, I told them about what we were doing because there was a point which I decided I really wanted that person and I recruited them. So, just, and that's how I got, I mean, I had a fabulous staff at Ocean View and that's how I got, went after the people I wanted. So, just throwing it out there.
But I'm not, can I ask a, but I'm not sure I'm following the, the parallel. I just, I thought the, the question, we know that we're gonna have finalists. We know that we're gonna interview them and they're gonna interview us. We know that we're going to make a selection. We know we're gonna negotiate a contract. Even in the contract negotiations process, somebody may decide, I've changed my mind. I mean, so, I, I don't disagree with anything you said, Ms. Campson. I just don't see the parallel between what you just described in terms of you individually recruiting a teacher versus the process that we're talking about with the superintendent. All I was saying is, is that we can do that after we've narrowed our candidates or chosen a candidate. That's all I was saying in terms of time.
And I'm always willing to go with what the board decides. I, that's not something that I would, I mean, whatever the board is.
So, Mr. Jordan?
The parallel that I, I'm drawing is that Lauren goes into that interview knowing what she wants in a candidate and what she's willing to offer. And so, that's what I'm asking is as the board, we go in knowing what we're willing to offer. But again, everything is negotiable and that, that's true. So, we can renegotiate that, but at least they know that we are where we stand going into it and that it can change.
I agree, I support that. Dr. Carroll?
Well, thank you. Mr. Jordan, you said tomorrow is the deadline and that is true. And we'll begin that process of vetting and, and we will actually be in touch with candidates and talking to them. That's a question that often comes up. So, that's why at this point, we, if we can, we need to give them some type of answer. If the answer is Virginia law is not less than two and not more than four, that's fine. But that could cause some candidates to second guess they will, is it, you know, if it's gonna be two, I'm not coming. If it's three or four, I'll come. But if, and I'm not pushing to decide today, I'm just saying that that's a question we'll get.
My, my thing is if it's, if the board doesn't have any intent of doing a two-year contract.
Sure.
Then we can eliminate that.
Okay.
I, what I'm saying is I don't think the board at this point should narrow itself to three. If we get, if we, I just don't see any reason to do that, that's all. We can eliminate two.
Can I ask a question?
There's no reason to narrow it to three.
I think I get exactly what you're saying and I don't think this would box you in if we have the ability to say to them, Virginia law is two years to four years. The board's goal is to have some commonality. However, anything, like, in any situation, it's negotiable. And if I was on the other end of that, I would, I wouldn't, that wouldn't cause me not to apply.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I think we're saying-
That's kind of what sounded like you were saying.
I think that's what I said.
That's what I should say, that sounds like what I just heard you say.
I think that takes care of everyone around the tables because of all that.
So, what we're going to say is what you just said and that, that did sound a lot like what Mr. Jordan just said.
Yeah, I think that's-
Because I was listening and I thought, well, if you're saying three or more, amen.
We hear you and, and, and they're just gonna want an answer from us.
Let me just give them directions so that they get a question, you can answer it intelligently that-
But us answering in that way is not going to scare off, I don't believe, a candidate.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, that's-
And I, I agree, you may, hopefully, coming from a superintendent's perspective, find a candidate through this process that you might want a four-year contract. That's really given them a commitment to the community because that's one of the things that came up across the board in terms of what we heard with the stakeholders, right?
Sure.
Stability.
Okay.
Yeah, they want stability.
So, so just rephrasing out what you, what you had said so that we're all, we're all clear on that.
Is that we will say Virginia law is two, maximum four. The board's goal obviously is to- The board's goal obviously is to have some stability. But in, in any case, when you negotiate a contract with the board, that's what's part of the negotiation process, length of contract.
Are we comfortable with that?
We'll say that.
Okay.
Is there consensus with that?
Yeah, and I, just from the experience standpoint, so when I first got on the board, we had a, superintendent was hired under one contract. We went through a superintendent search. We, we added incentives. We decided we wanted to try to encourage, uh, performance and things of that type. And so that's why I just think it's important that we make sure we maintain that flexibility, provide you with what you need for the candidates, but not, not box ourselves in if we decide we want to put some.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Performance incentives and other things in there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Next item, moving expenses. We've provided that in the past to, um, to our candidates and.
Do we set a limit on that? So it's just not?
Yes, there was definitely a limit on it. Um, and I can't recall off the top of my head how much it was. But, um, do you have, do you have items that you would suggest?
I, I really don't because I think that, again, someone moving from Virginia Beach is a little different than moving from, say, California. You know, so, but putting a cap on it, I, I don't know if, uh, if $10,000 is a good cap. I, I don't really know moving expenses from, from a long distance, what that would be.
Rodney, are you pulling up what we did last time?
Yeah, I know it has a cap in it.
Yeah, I'd like to see a cap in it.
I, again, I, I think having, uh, something that speaks to moving expenses is fine. I just don't think we should limit ourselves.
So you don't think we, y'all didn't use a cap in the past then? I didn't realize that.
We, I think we did, but just, I think, but we worked that out with, once we had the candidate. I mean, I don't think we, we didn't.
Right, it was part of negotiation.
Yeah, it was part of the negotiation. It wasn't.
That makes sense.
Of course, candidates, all past superintendent contracts are public records. So candidates can.
Can we simply say that we will, we will, we are, we are open to covering the cost of moving expenses?
That's all we need to be able to say.
But it is negotiable.
Yeah.
Are we okay with that? We don't have to put our number on it right now.
Yep, that's not a problem.
All right, look at that.
That was easy.
That was. Okay, next item.
We actually have two. Do the next ones until we do the other, the information that we still need to get from all the members, their input.
I'm going down his list real quick.
So we have two items left. One is the daily, and I have those actually flipped over. I shouldn't. One is the district interview schedule, and I think we already have that, December 16th through 20th. Are there specific days in that week, which you don't have, again, Mr. Jordan pointed on this, is we don't have to necessarily do that. I'm just asking you to think about that. What are the days that week? And if we have three finalists, or if, when I say we, we've said three, it could be four, it could be two. You all will determine that. Uh, but let's say it's three or four. Are there specific days that week? And also what will drive that is whether the, uh, they're open or closed. And if they're, if they're open, then you're probably, your, 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 uh, agenda that day, your process that day is going to be different than if it's closed. If it's closed, you bring them in or wherever, wherever you do that and you interview them and they're out of here and nobody interacts with them and all of that. And you probably can do more than one at a day if you choose to do that. If they're open, then you probably want to offer, you know, in most cases, uh, candidates will come in in the morning, maybe meet with, uh, different stakeholder groups or, or whatever, uh, visit a couple of schools, have someone tour them around the city to see the city. And then that evening, either have dinner or then, um, uh, and then the actual interview.
I'd like to break this conversation into two separate parts. I'd like to first identify the, um, the dates, um, from our end. I know that Ms. Campson had sent out some dates for us to make sure that we had on hold. And then I would like for you to speak a little bit more in depth about your experience and your, um, your expertise on the open versus closed, um, aspect of it. Because, you know, we, we want to do what's best, achieve the best candidate. And, um, and we're going to look to your guidance and, and combine that with our own experience. So I'd really like for you to, to help us come to that decision because we, we are going to take board action on that.
Right.
Um, I, I think it, it necessitates that. So, um, I know Ms. Campson, you had said, keep open the 16th, 17th, 18th, um, 19th?
Well, the 18th, no, not the 18th.
Go ahead.
It's a board meeting.
And were we doing a, um, uh, an announced finalist, then we would not be able to use that day because that would be a whole day for them. If we're not, then we could do, you know, two, we could do it in Monday and Tuesday.
Okay.
I, I have, if I could, well, when we get to that part, let me, because I have some things to say about it that I wanted to share with the board, some information of how that would work.
About the dates?
Well, yeah, yeah. I love, as I said, when I was doing it, I left the 18th open. I was thinking if we had three candidates, we, and we, and it was an open one, we would go Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, but if we only, if we go, if we close it, we could go Monday AM, Monday PM, Tuesday or something like that.
Okay.
So it would be less time, obviously, because they're just coming in, they're doing their two-hour interview and they're leaving. Although, you know, we might want to change that around a little bit. Because I, my understanding is if it's closed and you're not announcing the finalist, then if you walk them through, if we announce it's Monday and Tuesday, uh, and, and they come, then all you have to do is sit out here and then you know who, who they are.
Right.
And then that'll be out anyway. So a lot of this, a lot, asking for an extension, a lot of this is all based on what we decide.
Right.
We don't need an extension if we decide to compact it, but we, you know. So in other words, that might be something that the board needs to get, at least a straw vote. I know we, if we have, because we have to, if we're doing the extension, my understanding from reading the school board presidents or whatever he was.
Dr. Lanes.
Dr. Lane, from reading his response, he's saying that if we're asking for an extension, we have to certify a formal vote.
That's right.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, on the extension, you have to at this point.
Yeah.
Ask for an extension.
Yeah.
120 days have ended.
They don't end until January. We can't be 120 days. It was July 16th.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'm sorry. I thought that, uh, I had saw something where the 120 days.
If we were going to ask for an extension, we need to do it now. That's why I was trying to get it done in early November.
Well, you have to make the report within 120 days from the date of the date.
Yeah, but they got that. And the report was the calendar I sent them of what we'd already done and what our schedule was for the rest of the time.
So let's not get off track. Let's, Dr. Carroll, would you mind, and Dr. Farah, would you mind just walking the board through the, um, the thought process on open versus closed? And, and what we're talking about here is the final candidates and how we go about the process of interviewing the final candidates.
The final candidates, the final candidates.
Mm-hmm.
So, we, I've, I've been involved in searches that's done it both ways. We recommend an open, our company does, because there's, it lends itself to transparency. That we're being open, here are our three candidates, we announce those. And we tell those three candidates prior to releasing their names, your name will be released. Do you understand? They, they'll say, yes. Are you willing to move forward in the process? Yes, I am. You understand that people will know you've applied and you're the three finalists. You announce that. People know it. Generally, with that, um, type of process, as I said earlier, you bring the candidate in the day before, spend the night, they get up, they, they're here at the, at the district office or wherever you deem they should be. Usually there's a, a tour of the city at some point in the day, uh, maybe a visitation to a school or two, maybe meeting with some stakeholders groups, not 12 stakeholder groups, but just a group of stakeholders that you think would be important for them, not to interview the candidates, but just to have a discussion with the candidates, just to meet them and greet them and say hello and, uh, and just have some brief discussion with the candidates. Then generally, maybe a dinner with the board members, uh, at a point in time or it could be here or wherever you choose. We certainly want to make sure that that's legal as well, that that's announced and people know that. And then an interview time and you set a two-hour window of time, whether it's seven to nine or six to eight or whatever that you decide. That's the formal interview. That's where those questions are going to come in and you'll ask those questions at that time and take your notes and gather as much information as you can from the candidate. So that's, that's the open. It's, it's transparent. People in your community know, people in your city know, everybody can do their own homework, so to speak, if you will, with, with the internet. And they will, by the way, with that. But at least you're transparent. Closed, it's interesting in Georgia that, uh, their state law only requires that you announce the finalist, the finalist. But then once you announce that, there's a two-week window of time after that happens that, uh, before the board can actually vote. So they have to announce it two weeks prior to, to voting, actually voting on it. Again, I guess for transparency. But they don't, they don't release nor do they announce any of the semifinalists, any of the people who applied. They come down to one. I've worked, I worked with Fulton County, uh, Georgia, and that little very large district. And, uh, and they, they selected one. And a matter, matter of fact, not toot him on horn, but I was the person that said, here's the guy that is probably the, your best choice nationwide. And they selected him. And so they didn't announce it. I knew it, the candidate knew it, the board attorney knew it, and the board knew it, but nobody else knew it. They interviewed him privately. It was closed. Nobody else knew the conversations going on. So, uh, it's just what you prefer. We, as I said, we recommend because of transparency for it to be open. But if this board feels for whatever reason needs to be closed, then you could do that. And Ms. Campson, based on what you said about everybody's going to know it because they're going to walk in here, I don't think it necessarily has to be in this building or this room, like.
Yeah, and I would recommend not, if not.
Can I, can I add another perspective on everything that Barry said, from the candidate point of view? You have, and I think we've identified, a great place and a great district that is very, very complex with some very significant challenges. And from a candidate perspective, if I didn't have the opportunity to come in here in an open process to really not only to, to triangulate my information in terms of what I read versus the interactions I have with people and, and the feel I get of the district, it might set up a red flag to me in terms of coming to a district. If I'm given, especially if I'm a sitting superintendent, successful in another district. So I think, and what that does is that enhances the ability to meet, for me to be successful should I be the candidate of, of selection.
So when, when you were being interviewed, I don't know how many superintendencies you had. But what, right, and were they announced, when you were a finalist, they were announced?
Actually, one of, one of mine was a full day, totally open, and an evening that was a public interview.
Yeah, I wasn't.
With 300 people. Now, you're not going to go there here.
No.
But, but what it did for me was I accepted that position and fully knowing what the anger was and what the concerns were. Because that all came out in that three-hour session. Some people said I had my head examined, taken it, but in the end, it was a great decision for me. But I was, I had the ability to make that decision. So yes, I mean, I find going through the process as a candidate, an open process was better for me.
Okay.
So basically, the names are announced, i- if we were to, if the board were to choose this way. And then each candidate has a day that could include the two-hour interview sometime.
During the day.
Right, during the day. It could include visits to a couple of schools. Uh, you know.
But, whatever you choose to do on that day.
If we wanted to, we could do a meet and greet, maybe. I don't know about stakeholders, maybe. But a meet and greet if we chose. But whatever we choose, then that evening, we would have, take them out for dinner or something for a little more for, informal talk.
Mm-hmm.
That would be what the open one would, would look like and we would eat a day per candidate. And, but if we go closed, we don't announce anything. And from this, from the point that we make that decision on those finalists on the fourth, we go silent. Okay.
Um, I have a question. So, um, when, if we do the open route and the interview, and this is, um, a question also to Mr. Cloud, the interview, that can still be closed? The interview with the candidate, closed?
Let's, let's defer to Mr. Cloud on that as far as the interview being closed.
Sure. All, all, you know, under Virginia law, all board meetings have to be announced in advance. Notice of time and place. They have to open it in an open meeting. And then in an open meeting, somebody has to make a motion giving the details. That can't just be a reference to the statute. You have to give some general statement as to exactly what you're doing. And then you can ask the public to step out and you conduct the interview.
Okay.
The only exception to that is in cases where you're interviewing candidates for the chief executive officer, such as the superintendent or a city manager. And in those cases, if you wish to, if you give, you have to hold in an open meeting 15 days in advance. There's a 15-day window. And you announce to the public that you are going to be interviewing candidates for the superintendent position sometime within the next 15 days. And in that context, you don't have to give any further notice. You don't have to say where it's going to happen or when. And you can then hold a meeting sometime within that window where, uh, the public aren't given notice of where it's going to happen or when or anything else about it, solely for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of superintendent. And only within that window. If you don't do it within that window, then you have to make another statement in another o- open meeting. And probably I would say that, I, I don't know that the school board's ever taken advantage of that before. I don't remember being involved, but if we were going to do that, I should probably draft some sort of resolution for you to vote on.
I just don't recall what we did last time.
But otherwise, all your meetings have to be given notice to the public.
It was very close last time.
And they have to start in an open session.
But I don't, I don't, I don't remember it was long ago if we gave that notice.
Well, as far as I know, it's never been done.
Mm-hmm.
That if it was done, it didn't involve me.
Right.
Because I've never written such a thing. Nor do I recall any such notice.
So, December 4th would be our next meeting. And looking at counting on the calendar, it would take us up, the 15 days would take us up to the 18th.
Well, now, I, I was, are, are you actually interviewing people on the board?
No.
No.
Well, we're looking, well.
This is only for interviews.
No, 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 that's what I'm, what I'm saying based off of the.
He's counting the 15 days.
I'm looking at the days that Ms. Campson, because we would have to do it at a meeting that we have announced.
We'll see, but if we're.
So the fourth is the next meeting that we would have.
So you could announce it then?
So we could announce that we're going to be interviewing the people that were looking at the videos.
Sometime either.
Within the next 15 days.
Which would take us to the 18th.
And then do we have to announce our choice at the end of that 15 days?
You said 19th, I'm sorry.
No, that's purely just for, for an interview.
So, so I had one more question. The dinner, taking them to dinner, is that, is that also something that we?
If, if anything to do with the North Public Schools business is discussed, whether it's the duties of the superintendent, general issues like that, it's a meeting. It has to be given notice and it's open to the public.
But if it's the interview and the interview is extended, dinner, location.
If you want to do an interview in executive session, you would have to hold an open meeting at which you would move to go into executive session.
But what I'm saying though, Jack, and what you just said with the 15 days, if we're saying that we're interviewing candidates with the visits that they're coming in, it's an interview where we're taking them on a tour, we're taking them on a dinner.
Again, you have to give notice, uh, ahead of time in an open meeting. And then you have to do it within that 15 days. And it's for one meeting. It's not for a series of meetings. It means you're going to hold a meeting within that 15-day period.
I just can't extend it.
To interview candidates.
I'm just, I was trying to.
You can't hold a series of meetings within that 15 days.
Well, how could we get three candidates in in one day? Okay, okay. No, it's over 15 days. It's over 15 days.
But it's one meeting.
I have the information that I.
You're going to hold one meeting within 15 days.
No, no, no. You're saying one meeting per candidate. You're interviewing a certain number of candidates within the 15 days.
It is one meeting to interview candidates within that 15-day period.
So all, all candidates have to interview on the same day. That's what he had.
Understand that this is a unique exception and as far as I know, it's very rarely taken advantage of in Virginia law.
Well, they must have done it. You almost have interviewed them all together last time.
One person at a time, Mr. Cloud.
The general practice is to hold a regular meeting and go into executive session and conduct your interviews. Not to hold a meeting where you're purposely keeping from the public the date and time of the meeting.
All right, well, and, you know, we're going to have to come back to that one from the last time, but from right now.
And the only way to do that is by going through this process. That's the only allow.
If it's closed, if it's closed, if we don't announce.
The only way you can hold a meeting without telling the, the public where it's going to be and what time it is is if you're going to interview candidates for the position of superintendent. Is if you're going to interview candidates for the position of superintendent. And you go through this process.
And you do them all in the same day?
It's one meeting.
It's one meeting.
You have, you have to notify the public fifteen days in advance that you're holding a single meeting.
For each inter- each interview would be.
The, all the interviews would be done in one meeting.
Could you not, Mr. Cloud, have three notifications? That you notify fifteen days in advance, that on Thursday, whatever the date is, you're gonna do an interview. And then announce on Friday, you're gonna have an interview and then on.
You could do that, you could do multiple announcements in open sessions.
That you're going to hold different meetings to interview.
So on the fourth, we could give multiple announcements out.
Well, how does everybody feel?
Is for one meeting. If you're going to interview candidates without telling the public where you're going to do it or what time you're gonna do it. You have to announce that you're going to hold that meeting essentially secretly. Within the next fifteen days. And then you have fifteen days to hold that secret meeting. And then later, at some, if you're gonna hold another meeting sometime after that, you would then announce it again. That you're going to hold.
So I'm just trying to, for planning purposes, we know we have a meeting on the fourth. And if we announce that we're gonna interview somebody, that's for one meeting. Would it mean that we have to come as a body back to a regularly scheduled meeting that we've announced to the public, given notification, going in public and saying we're gonna? Let's say Monday.
You're gonna hold a second meeting without notice to the public.
We have, we can't do it in the same meeting, it has to be a new.
No, you can do it all in one meeting, you can have a twelve hour meeting if you want. So you can, you can interview any number of candidates at that.
Just can't leave, that meeting has to be continuous for twelve hours.
So let me, let me do this. What is the feel of the board on open versus closed now that we've had this discussion?
Before you go there, just, so, uh, the announcement, when we did our superintendent search for twenty sixteen. We did a announcement, it was a candidate's interviews announcement. It said, the school board of City Norfolk will be conducting interviews for the position of superintendent. From August twentieth, two thousand fifteen to September third, twenty fifteen. These interviews will be held in accordance with the Code of Virginia section, so on and so forth. So we, we did that. We announced the time period over which we would be having, uh, interviews. And then we conducted interviews across that time period.
Acrossed it, so not all in the same day, didn't do just one meeting.
Well, I'm just, I'm reading the statute literally. I'll be happy to do some research and see if there's any attorney general opinions. Uh, that have gone into detail as to what that involves. I don't, as far as I can remember, I've never been asked to review the law governing the use of that unique exception.
Were those open?
How, how do members feel about with the information that's been provided to us? Having the open versus the completely closed.
The question before we do that. So Dr. Carol, you're describing your experience in Georgia with this process. What's been your experience in Virginia with the process? And, um, and then for the board, when we were going through the process of evaluating. Responses that we got for the search process, you know, we had some questions about this then. And, uh, and I know we said we would come back and, and address it. I'm just concerned that we are, um, I'll, I'll address it then, so just, just, just go forward. I'm concerned about the, the process that we went through in determining the search process. And now the process that we're now going through with deciding how we're gonna handle the, the search process.
Well, the, the way that I see it is that collectively, we landed on, um, this firm. And that they are the ones that are guiding us through this process because none of us are the experts in this. And we have decided to include Mr. Cloud's to make sure that we are following the law to the letter. With every item that we are expected to do so that it is done in transparency, that it is done legally. And that it is done, uh, to the Code of Virginia. And so if at any time the process is not being followed legally or through your experience. I would expect them to say something to us. I think that maybe being comfortable with the decisions that we've made thus far, I can understand if there's concern about that. But I don't think that we have not followed process.
Okay, ju- just, just so I can be more specifically clear. I'm not suggesting that we haven't followed the process. What I'm saying is, as part of the process, when we were reviewing applicants for, uh, who would conduct our search. There were questions and discussions that we had that, that weighed into our selection of who would do our search. You recall that, correct?
Yes.
That's what I'm referencing.
Yes.
That's all.
Yes, and, and, and to be perfectly, uh, transparent, the concern was. Does the firm specifically, um, will, will require open search? Or would they be open to a closed search? And I called them on the phone, we all heard the conversation, and they said it was up to the board. And that's where we are right now. And this is where we are right here.
In terms of my response, I'm, I was asked a question and I just gave my honest opinion. But if you choose to do a closed search, that's your choice.
That's why I said, my, my comment was to the board. I'm just saying that, eh, during the selection process, uh, had it been said then that it was a requirement. Then my decision process may have been different, that's all. We discussed internally and in closed session, I'm trying to respect what we did there. I just wanted to remind folks of that discussion that we had.
Back to, uh, Dr. Gabriel's question, and I appreciate the comment on that. And I'm, my only concern is this, and I don't know. But the closed versus open for me is if we get a candidate that is somewhere within our geographic area. That's close. Putting them in a position, and I don't know, and I'm just saying, that's the only way I look at it. Somebody coming clear across the country. You know, you may know somebody here, but it's not the same thing. Because let's say that you put yourself out there to be a candidate here and you're in this area somewhere. And we decide not to go with you, what does that send back? And I could look at two different ways, um, because you could be a great superintendent and your board finds out that you're looking somewhere else. It might give you some leverage in negotiating to stay and, and maybe do some other things. Or it might be the other way and say, okay, you wanna leave? You're out of there. So that's my, my only concern is that if we have a great candidate that's somewhere in Virginia. And in this close, in the area here, what that does if we have it public and open for that particular candidate pool there versus the closed. So that's the only thing for me personally that I look at is what that might do to a great candidate that we might wanna be able to. That's the only thing that I have.
None of us have a crystal ball in terms of that. People are gonna have their own viewpoint toward that as well. I've been in both situations where I've. Been in a search that was open and, matter of fact, the reason why it was open because in my view. Any superintendent who's really worth it in terms of hiring, if they're gonna get to a finalist's position. They're gonna have a discussion with their Board of Education.
Do we necessarily want them?
You know what I'm saying, you're gonna have a discussion with your Board of Education saying, this is an opportunity I'm looking at. Now, that might not always be the case. So you, there's no crystal ball, right?
Yeah, and we, you know, I said it was our sig- it is our firm's suggestion that it's open. But we're not dictating that, we're not suggesting it for you, it's your call, you do what you think is best for your district. We're fine with that.
And that's why I asked to have this, we need to know this today. Because it, it's like a domino and how it affects other things that I'm supposed to be.
Sure, you are in charge of it, Ms. Campson.
But I wanna make sure that the board decides what to do. So that I know, am I supposed to plan a day?
Right, exactly. Comment though, go ahead, Ms. Basine.
So I understand, uh, you know, I, at the, for the last search. I, uh, you know, was critical or criticized the board at the time initially. For having a close, you know, for leaning that way, and this was before I was on the board. And I came on during the interview process and in that time, like, I learned. The positive, what the positive impacts of having a confidential search and interview process would bring us. And then during that interview process, I recall that we had a significant number of individuals. I think almost up to twenty, that when they realized it wasn't, you know, that the confidentiality may be an issue. They retracted their application. So in Virginia, uh, that just stands out to me because I remember thinking, that was like twenty applicants. That we didn't get to access and, and, uh, you know, vet for the position. Because of concerns around confidentiality. So with that in mind, you know, I agree that, you know, we don't know, we might get, you know, individuals from the region, we may get them from across the country. I hope that our pool is as large and wide as it, as it can be. Because I know I'm being open minded about it, but, uh, you know, I'm leaning toward a closed, um, interview. Because, for those reasons, because, you know, that's, that's just.
Appreciate that, okay. Ms. Campson?
First of all, I'm for the interview being closed, I don't think anyone should have to be interviewed in public, we keep them closed here. That's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about announcing the names of the three finalists. I certainly think that by the time you're a finalist and a professional, you would let your employer know at that point. So that they don't get blindsided, all right, to, to respond to that part. But as someone who was not involved in the last process, but I was simply a bystander, there was a lot of bad feelings about the secrecy of it. My text messages exploded that morning when it was finally announced, people were really, really upset. And I think that, you know, we try and talk about being transparent. You can talk about being transparent and not be transparent, saying it and doing it are two different things. And we have promised all of our stakeholders that we were really going for transparency. We've been transparent about everything we've done so far. And, and I know I watched when T- was it TCC that just recently hired a new, um, boss leader, whatever they call the president. That their, their names and pictures appeared in the paper. You know, they didn't then take that person, you know, and, and, and have the public interview them, they didn't do the interview in public. But they announced who those people were. It just, this just recently happened. And, and I, when I saw it, I thought, well, this is, you know, what I'm asked for, let's just tell everyone who those three candidates are, who should be letting their people know. I really have a concern about someone that's a professional and is involved in something at this ti- I'm not saying. That we should be releasing names all along, we shouldn't have, but the three finalists, I really think that that's, I mean, I think we need to be transparent with our stakeholders. So that's just where I am with it.
Ms., Ms. Martin?
Are, are we open with, say we, so I'm gonna err on transparency, so say we wanna, we'll say we're gonna have, and your recommendation. We'll, we'll have our interviews open. But then also be open to if someone does not wanna have an open interview, having a closed interview.
Well, are we saying interview or are we saying the announcement of who they are? Because I'm certainly not saying that we should.
More discreet about their, their, are we open to? One of the finalists saying that they'd like to opt out of the open transparent process, that they would like to interview discreetly?
Not have their name announced.
I don't know, undisclosed.
We want it all, obviously.
I would like to know that they were professional enough.
What do you, what do you think about that?
Dr. Carol, what, Dr. Ferry, what do you think about that?
Could you repeat the question, I was focusing on.
You could have a Snickers too.
You know.
You need a Snickers.
Trying to be consistent across the district and across the process, I, I would, I would personally have, I'm not speaking for a company when I say it. But personally, from my experience, I would think something is odd going on when one is in public and one is. It's also problematic if that be the case and the person who goes through the closed process gets the position. And the other two people who said, I'll be open to the world, don't get the position, then there's inconsistencies to those.
That's right, now's the time to do it.
Yeah, because we gotta decide today.
Can I get to Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I'm in favor of closed interviews, uh, protecting the identity of the candidates. To as much as we possibly can and announcing the final candidate.
Okay, thank you.
The finalist of.
No, she said the final candidate.
In other words, the winner. The winner is what they are there, winner.
Look at all you've won. All right. The winner. Mr. Mr. Jordan. Ms. Campson?
I don't like the discussion being couched as being transparent or non-transparent. Uh, I think that, um, if our intent is to maximize the pool. Then, um, not announcing the finalists and not parading the candidates. Is consistent with trying to have the maximum candidates in the pool. I think that if we, if we were going to do the. By words, the parading of the finalists and the announcement of the finalists. Then I think that is something we should have done from the beginning. Also, I think, and I'll give you a couple of reasons why. One, I think, going back to Mr. Clayton's point, not only is it just local candidates. But, you know, when I was at Council of Great City Schools, you go anywhere, that's the, the talk, people talk about, uh. Candidate searches. So, uh, I don't consider it as being unprofessional. To not go and tell your current employer, um, that you're pursuing other employment. I, I think people do that all the time. I think that if you have an internal candidate, uh, that's a, that's known. Let's say we had a principal, let's say we have a principal that decided to apply for the position. Then people in the local community, we would know that, that person. So I think that internal candidate gets an advantage, um, that a external candidate would have. In terms of, um, that process. And then I can recall, um, um, a scenario where, actually, it happened. We had a previous superintendent and the, uh, the superintendent was interviewing for a position. Was being considered for an interview in another district. And, uh, the local newspaper found out about it. Called board members and asked about it, ended up getting into the newspaper and the media. The board actually called a special meeting with the superintendent to talk about it because the board felt blindsided. By when we were in the midst of trying to deal with one set of things. Here we hear through the media, and I think that's Ms. Campson's point, here we hear through the media that, that, that the person was considering other, other options. I don't wanna put any other prospective candidate, uh, in that, in that position. So I think that if we, um, have the confidential search. Do the confidential selection of finalists, do the confidential, uh, discussion as a board as to who we want to hire. Once we have arrived at that decision and negotiated a contract, then we would announce that, that person.
I was thinking about this before, and I think that what Rodney says raises some good point was that we had, we've actually already, so not saying transparent. But we have been transparent with our process so far. We have gotten the stakeholder feedback and we are using that to make our decision as elected candidate, or elected officials. So that, you know, we've been, we're entrusted with this responsibility and, um, so.
This is being couched.
Like, I don't like the word parade, but that doesn't mean we can't say it.
And I have to say that I think, and you all, you probably remember this, but we did the whole parading around of candidates.
Yeah, and we liked it, people liked that, they liked to meet people.
Yeah, but then that person only stayed for like sixteen months. It was, it, we went from, and I don't know if you guys. Remember, I mean, we went from this, you know, we had a retirement, then we had somebody was here, and then it was all this big push on transparency, transparency. It really became this big parading around, we had, we were in TC and we had these public meetings and, and all this other stuff down there. And then we went from that and then we went to the other extreme. And where we said, no, no more, we're not doing that, we're gonna do, you know, we went with clothes for the next two. So I just want people to know that, it's not that we haven't done a public one, but we didn't get very good results out of that.
Public was.
Okay, well, Dr. Carol, you.
I, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Jordan very respectfully, so don't take this wrong. When you said, uh, I wish we'd have decided this back when, if you recall in our first.
If you recall in our first meeting, I did say, "We need to make that determination whether it's going to be open or closed because I need to inform the candidates."
Yes.
I, I did say that, so.
Just so you know, my, I'm.
You weren't pointing that at me.
I'm having a conversation with the board. You are here in the midst of that conversation.
I just wanted to make sure everybody remembered that we did say that.
And as you know, I've been asking about this ever since you raised that.
Right.
Yes.
So, um, from my perspective, um, we went through the process closed last time. I'm open to it being open. Um, and I can say just from my personal experience from going through a residency match, um, where you can, you can, uh, uh, there's opportunity for you to do this through a close way or you could do it through an open way. And, um, I found it, as somebody who was interviewing the location where I would be spending my next time and investing a significant amount of my professional development, I found it very beneficial to be able to see, um, what was going on every day, um, from my perspective to help me make my decision. To say, is this a good decision for Noel or is this not a good decision for Noel? And, um, so I, I fully respect everyone's, um, thoughts on this. Um, but I'm willing to, to go open. And, and I think that, uh, uh, for our candidates that are here, I do think that, for me, if I am considering going to another position, I am going to be open with my employer and I'm going to let them know because I'm probably going to be putting them down for a letter of reference. Um, and I, I want them to know and, and think of it as an opportunity versus not as, you know, I'm trying to leave a situation that, you know, may not be very good for, for me. But, um, I, I, again, I respect everyone's opinion and I really do appreciate everybody's thoughts. Um, but I'm willing to, to follow, um, your recommendation and to try it, um, like this. So my vote would be to do open with closed interviews.
That's what I would also support.
Can I, I'm, I'm not clear on that. Say, what is open with closed interviews?
Well, the candidate would come in as he described. We would, um, do maybe.
An all-day process and then the interview be closed?
And then the, and then the interview be closed. We would, as Mr. Cloud said, said, okay, we would make a motion to go into closed session. We go into closed session, we do our interview. And then that evening, we do a, an informal dinner.
Which is like an informal interview.
You know. And then.
I like that.
And then move on to the next person.
Get to know them a lot better. You get to know the candidates a lot better that way.
I'm now even more confused.
I'm still not clear on that. So when you say open with a closed interview.
I was never asking to have someone.
Okay. Oh, hold on, Ms. Campson.
Right.
Mr. Jordan.
When you say open with a closed interview, describe the open part to me.
The open part is that the candidate would come in.
Well, we would announce the names of the candidates.
You would announce the names of the candidates.
The three finalists.
You would announce, you would announce who they are. They come in, we would have a itinerary that would be the same for everybody, for everyone. Um, not all simultaneously, but one by one. And then, um, and they, they would, you know, as you said, I'm just following what they said. Uh, maybe tour a school, maybe have a little informal meet and greet with some stakeholders.
Or maybe not.
Then we go into a closed session. Then we, we come back here or we go to another location and we go into a closed session. We certify the closed session and we say, now we are going to be conducting the interview. We do the interview, then, um, then we break. And then, I don't know what happens after that. And then that night, we meet up for dinner and we send them on their way. And then the next day, we go through the process again. I'm open to that.
Um, so the, uh, the process of the potential, of the finalists meeting with stakeholders, are you, are you saying that you are recommending that we do that?
I'm not.
I, I would say that whatever that is going to look like, we have to be very, very, um, careful. Uh, and we have, whatever we do for one, we do for all. So I don't recommend that stakeholders have the ability to interview the candidate. That's our job. That's what we're here to do. But I think that it is perfectly fine if it's.
School visits. Go to.
We don't even have to include that. We don't. It, it could be up to us. We could just do school visits, interview, dinner, and bye-bye.
A city tour, a tour of the city.
Yeah, a tour, tour of the city. Yeah.
Just that a couple of schools have a tour of the city, have an interview somewhere in there and then, and then, and then the board have dinner with them that night to just to build a little more form, informal, see how the, how it, how we're all clicking together.
Mm.
You know?
I guess what I'm not, what's not clear to me then in that scenario is what's, what's the value input to the board in that process?
Getting to know.
Well, I'm.
No, no.
It's, it's.
Ms. Camp, um, if the board is going to do an interview.
Cause.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, so, so we have the ability to ask our questions in the closed session. Okay? That's private. It should be private. I believe that should be private. I don't think anybody should be interviewed publicly. But the value is really to the candidate.
Correct.
The value is to the candidate so that they can say, you know what? I think I can make this work. I think I can make this work for me, for my family, for all of the other items. Um, because we want them to buy into us.
Yes. We're recruiting.
And, um, and so it is just amount, much is about them buying into us as us buying into them.
My question was, what's the value to the board in that process? We, ultimately, we make the decision, right?
That's true.
And the board has to make that selection. So in that process, that the, the, the degrees of the variances of the processes you described, what is the value to the board in our decision-making?
I mean, I think there's a lot that you can learn from, from, from an experience such as this. You can see how they interact with individuals. You can, you can, you can see a lot. Um, and so, uh, that, that's where I think, I, I can think about that. Let, let me think about that a bit more.
I'm just asking because you, you recommended it.
But I'm going to go to Ms. Campson.
Well, I think our value is that we do see the more, both in a formal interview setting and in a informal meeting together to have dinner. And second of all, it's recruitment. By the time then, we've got the top three people, we think. We want to make sure that the one we decide on also decides on us. And I mean, yeah, as I've said, I've done a lot of hiring and that's what I do. I mean, that's what, when you want to get the best people, they may not choose you. We don't know that this is the only place they've, they've applied. You know, there may be on someone else's finalist list. We don't know. We want them to be excited and interested. They're going to want to see how the board interacts together too. They won't see that in an interview, but they'll see us together and we'll be able to see them and how they relate to us so that, I mean, we want to start off with a great, great, great relationship between our board and our superintendent. And I think we learn a lot. I mean, I will, of course, as always, respect the will of the board. I'm just telling you, this is how I very strongly feel is that, and I will use the word transparent. It's also transparent and I think that that helps us with our constituents, our stakeholders who have been asking for transparency. So those would be the three reasons that I would see. Recruitment, transparency, viewing this as a continuation of the transparency that we've used throughout this whole process. And then a chance to have an informal idea of how is this person informally? So I would give those as the three reasons for doing it. I would not take them through stakeholders because we've already had input from there. We're making the final decision. They elected us to do that. But they, certainly doesn't hurt to include them in knowing who it is. And, and looking them up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, looking them up. I mean, I wish I could have looked up the last ones. I mean, the last one came across as very secret and secret's not a word we need to have used, you know? So I'm very, I, those are my three reasons. I'll stop talking.
I still don't see the benefit in the open piece of it. If a candidate is truly interested in our district, they have multiple resources available to them right now to get a feel for us, how we operate. Um, one is definitely this booklet here. Another one is this meeting right here. Uh, there are various tools available to them to make an informed decision whether or not they want to interview for a position in this district. I think on the onset, it is very important for us to protect their identity going through the process, um, and not make that decision for them. And if someone's not interested in the closed process, then they can remove their name from it. But I think most would probably appreciate the closed process.
Okay. Okay. Any other thoughts?
Just reiterating, um, I'm much more concerned about having a great pool of individuals to pull from. Um, and if, and I also value being transparent and I think that we've been very transparent through this entire process. Um, but I think we get to a certain point where we have to protect candidates. Not saying that they, not telling one back home or whatever. But I want to make sure that I have as many folks that I can pull from, um, and that, who feel as though, because we have to be real in the reality that, and Mr. Jordan mentioned it, um, you know, about a situation in the past and, and we live in our own environment around here. Um, you know, for the press or anything to get with of a certain particular candidate before we are able to make the, the right decision or a decision without outside influence around it. Because at the end of the day, our constituents and our staff and, and our parents are, are, are telling us to get it right. They're not, they don't care about the process. They're just telling us to get it right and to get the right person who's going to stay here and help us move this district. And so, um, I appreciate the, the variance of difference of opinion from my colleagues, but I feel as though, um, a closed process for me for the finalists protects the finalists and allows me as a board member to be able to, to look at a pool of candidates and make the right decision, to get it right.
So if we could kind of take a, a straw vote, because then I can, I have like a set of dominoes here with other decisions.
Okay.
So that I'll know which way to go. And we don't real.
Well, it is important for planning.
I know.
Which way you do it. Well, but, um, if, if we could do, we, we don't have to do a formal vote on this. We could decide with a straw vote. We, we only have to, we have to do a formal vote if we need the extension. In other words, we have to certify a formal vote that we're asking for the extension. So we don't need to get to that to, this needs to be decided first.
Got it.
So if we could kind of get an idea, we don't really have to take a formal vote on whether we're doing it closed or open or what.
Closed.
We don't need a motion for that? No, no, we just.
Well, actually, I, I, I would prefer.
An open vote in the meeting.
Well, well, we can, we can do informal here and then we'll do a formal in the meeting.
So that we can get this piece done since we don't have another meeting this month. Okay, that's fine. Either way, as long as I know what the will of the board is, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay. Um, what's the, I mean, why can't we just vote on it now?
Are we allowed to vote on it now?
Yes.
Mr. Cloud.
It's an open session.
Open session, we can.
And there can be a vote.
We can.
It's not standing front is what it's for. But I mean, we can do it.
I just don't want to do anything else in this catchy atmosphere.
Right.
So Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I move for a closed session for finalist.
I'm.
See.
For interviewing.
For interviewing.
Yeah.
Is that, is that good? Second.
Okay.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to keep the finalist interview process closed. There is a second by Mr. Jordan. Uh, we will now have discussion. Any discussion on this?
So just to make sure I'm clear, this is where we fifteen days out announce it and then we have the interviews.
Which we can do on the fourth of December.
Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure I understand.
And Ms. Keep.
So we release no names until we release the choice.
Can I just say one thing about that then?
Of course.
Because I've looked at the statute now just to refresh my recollection. This is what it says about that. Prior to any such closed meeting, for the purpose of interviewing candidates, and notice it's singular, any such closed meeting, the public body shall announce in an open meeting that such closed meeting, and again, it's singular, shall be held at a disclosed or undisclosed location within fifteen days thereafter. So I think that any judge would look at that and say, that does not give you the ability to announce to the public that you're going to hold a series of meetings within the next fifteen days. It allows you to tell the public you're going to hold a closed meeting without telling them where or when for that purpose within the next fifteen days.
Okay.
That's what we did last time. All right. So that would mean we do all.
You do it three times.
We're going to decide.
Either that or you do it over a series. You know, you announce one meeting and then.
You can announce three meetings in one day? Can you announce three in one day?
We had, you can, what we did before, we, we followed that. We announced the meeting, we arranged with the candidates and we met with the candidates on that day.
On one day? You got all of them in?
That's correct.
How was that? How was that?
We didn't do, we didn't do all.
We did two rounds. We did two rounds.
I thought we did two rounds.
So you announced it twice then?
Correct.
Yeah, we did do.
You did two announcements.
And you can do two announcements. One, you know, they're each for fifteen days.
Yeah. No.
They're valid for fifteen days.
Okay. So we're on the discussion then. We're on discussion. So any, any discussion points?
I think we already pretty much.
Call the question.
I'm on the fence though. Because I can see the benefits of both.
Exhausted.
Well, make up your mind because the votes come your way so fast.
Okay.
I'll call the question.
Yeah. Call for the question.
Mm-hmm.
Discuss this.
Okay. Um, hmm, well, let me just say this, that I, I'm going to vote in support of an open session. It is based upon the recommendation of our firm. It's also based on the fact that I do think that it is an important recruitment tool. And I, I don't see the harm, uh, in, in bringing in, um, a candidate to see what we have to offer as, as a, as a wonderful place of employment. I do believe that. And so that's, that's why I will be voting for the open, open session. Ms. Tanner, if you could call the question?
Lucine?
Aye.
Campson?
No.
Lantern?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Voting for closed.
Yes, it's closed. No, it's closed.
No, she was no.
Jordy, should I?
Aye.
April?
No. Okay. So the motion carries and the determination now is that the final three or the final candidates will be interviewed in a, in a closed, closed fashion.
With the location and the date.
Not simply closed, but also pursuant to the special statute that allows you not to reveal.
That's correct.
And when will the announcement of that be made?
Well, that's the next step that we have to talk about right now. So let's, let's discuss that.
Okay, real quick, there's just a little list here. First of all, we do need to decide on the number of semifinalists that we want to have brought to us on the fourth, from which we would choose the finalists. That needs to be done that day so that we can, because on the fourth, you're going to be announcing to the public, your fifteen minute clock will be starting. And that's the only time we have to do it. Fifteen minute, fifteen day. Whoa, we're going to work fast. Okay, so if, if, I'm recommending six. Do you think it's about a half an hour of, it, when you bring the semifinalists back to us in, on December fourth, is that going to be about thirty minutes per candidate to go through their application and their, yeah?
Probably thirty minutes per.
So if we have.
And there's nothing magical about six. That's kind of the number that I randomly use. But it can be more. And you can say this, I, or we can say this, I guess. We may have eight great ones. We don't want to eliminate two that maybe we think you all need to see.
So should we say like six to eight then?
Do we have to say?
Well, he has to know how many to do the videos and all.
I would say, yeah, if they're meeting the criteria and they're strong.
That's what I would say. Use your best judgment.
Oh, so we, all right, well, all right, so I checked that one off.
If you feel like you have eight solid candidates, you send us eight.
Okay. And I'm sorry, it is time, and I've got to get Dr. Ferri to the airport. So if you would just let us know, or let me know, or both of us know what you decide and you locked that down, you voted on it and you're ready to go, then, you know, we're good with that. And we know how to move forward or not to move forward with some of these other procedural kinds of things.
All right.
We look forward to seeing you again on December fourth.
Great meeting. I can't wait until December.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Now, we have a lot of work to do between now and then.
Sure, and we wish you a safe travel.
Yes.
Just one question for you before you go. I asked the question earlier. Will we receive a profile description of all the candidates that came in that we, that you received? Let me, let me ask a question first before we shake the head no. Will we receive, how many candidates were women? How many were sitting superintendents? The demographic profile of the applicants is what I was asking about.
But we won't provide all the information except for the ones we bring to you. It's, meaning the resume.
Even the detail.
Information, yeah. And we will give more than just the resume and information to you. Dr. Ferri and I will do our homework with the reference, what the references said, what we found on the internet. And believe me, this has happened before. We get to the, a meeting and a board member said, did you find this? I found this on the internet. And we said, no, we didn't know that. We didn't find that. So you're certainly, you know, free to do your own as well once we, you know, once we announce those six or whatever, so.
All right. We're good? We're good then for you guys to exit.
It may be tomorrow before you get the email since we'll be here probably till nine thirty tonight, but you'll get any information.
Well, I have to go to Atlanta tomorrow to present to them about their superintendent, so, or superintendent serves. So I may be out of pocket as well.
Okay, that's fine.
Tell Alabama they can keep their football coach. Tell Alabama they can keep their football coach.
I'm sorry. I had to say that. Tell Ohio State to take it easy on Rutgers.
All right, football people.
All right, back to business. Okay, Ms. Campson, tell us what we need to.
All right, so we'll have six states semifinalists from which we'll probably, we'll choose two to four finalists. And we'll do that on the fourth. So this now impacts other things. So the planet, the plan their day, we don't have to do because they won't be coming in to have that day of orientation. This also impacts the extension, the request for an extension. The original timeline had us making our decision and giving it to the firm by this, on the, of the research firm on the second so that everything fell in within that timeline. With this, since we'll be interviewing two to four candidates sometime between the fourth of December when we make the announcement and what did you say was the day?
The nineteenth.
December nineteenth. So between the fourth and the nineteenth and the nineteenth. All right, the nineteenth is, that Thursday, which means that we could put the twentieth, if we chose, to make the final selection and stay on that tight schedule so that we don't need an extension. Or we, I mean, we could always use the twentieth. Or we can push it out with an extension for two weeks. Because remember, once we make our decision, then you've got contract negotiations. You've got, they do a deep dive background check, you know, so they need a few days to get all that stuff done and the negotiations have to be done. So we need to make a decision on whether to go to vote formally on asking for the extension, which we only need for a couple of weeks. Or the other thing we can do is we can go into the winter break. Now, because we're doing just, you know, these interviews, so, you know, just small interviews, we could finish it up a little bit earlier. We don't know yet because that's not something that we'll be publicizing. But we still have, but we do have one day before spring break, I mean, winter break starts at least. But we may have, but if we did it, you know, finished up, you know, start a little bit earlier.
This is going to be my recommendation. I recommend that we still ask for the extension because we never know what could happen.
And that's fine with me if it's fine with the board. I just, but this has to be a formal vote now.
Right. No, we have, we already have a motion that's up for this evening on the agenda for that. The letter is attached, all of it.
Right.
Okay, and I think that it's best for us to just err on the side of caution and to have it in place. That way, if something happens, we don't know what, we don't have a crystal ball. We at least have that extension there as a safety net. My second recommendation.
Question on that.
Okay.
So earlier you all mentioned that there was some response that came from Dr. Lane. I haven't seen that response. What, can you fill us in on what you're referring to?
So I sent a letter. Ms. Campson said that we needed to have a letter sent asking for an extension.
Right.
So I drafted a letter and with Mr. Cloud and we sent the letter. So Dr. Lane then emailed us back. We sent it physically and we sent it through email. And he emailed us back and said, sounds great, but this needs to be a board action, like a board vote.
There was a step in between there.
Okay.
Would it be okay if I back up a little bit?
Sure.
First of all, I owe the board an apology. I, as you know, I was going out of my way to be super, you know, just be a pass, a pass through as a liaison should be. And everything that came in, I was immediately forwarding it to all the members of the board. If we needed a decision on something, I was shooting something out saying, is this okay? Let me know by the end of tomorrow, something. And then unfortunately, I had the accident and, which made worse because I went to Charlottesville. And I ended up with a concussion and, and so I wasn't on top of it. But I knew from talking to Mr. Cloud that around the first of November, I needed to file a report with the, the board, whoever we were following with, that let them know.
Board of Education.
Board of Edu, State Board of Education, to let them know of where we were in the process of our hiring within the hundred and eighty days, which would have been a, basically a timeline that mentioned, that listed the things we'd already done by November first and then shot that timeline out until we made the final hire within a hundred and eighty days. And so when I got to the point where I could think about it again, it was just grabbing right onto November first. Well, I'd already done the timeline. And so I called Dr. Gabriel and said, if we're going to, maybe we should just ask for the extension for safety to make sure we have it. And if we do it, we won't be so crunched because we're losing two weeks over winter break. And I don't want to have to ask board members to come in during the winter break because everybody has families and things to do. And so it did not occur to, so I said, I don't feel that I should be asking for anything. I'm just a board member. And so I called Dr. Gabriel and said, could you write a letter that I can attach to this report that has to go in, asking for the extension? Because now I understand that it's an automatic, if you ask for it and everyone's in favor of it. I did not know that I needed to have a formal board vote. And so I apologize for that slip because I really did go out of my way to be as transparent, as inclusive as I could be. I, it just fell and bumped my head. What can I say? So I would like to start with that apology. And I thought it was all taken care of. Dr. Gabriel had to rush to get it done because I was right up on that time. And, and so that's, so we sent it in. I called Mr. Cloud and asking if he could provide who it was that I was supposed to send it to. And then Dr. Gabriel did it and they got it off. And then we got a letter or an email back from Dr. Lane saying that he did not realize that we had not taken a formal vote or something and we need to take a formal vote. So that's why I was making sure we could get that formal vote in. With, with the process that we have chosen to do for the finalist, for the interview of the finalist, we're not quite as compressed on time, so we'd probably be okay. But I agree still with Dr. Gabriel. It doesn't hurt to have the extra time. You know, I know that I make everybody crazy with my adherence to deadlines. And I set deadlines and think I should always be on dead, on the deadline. And I was trying to make that deadline when maybe my thoughts weren't as clear as they needed to be. And I just missed that step. So that I offer all of you an apology. I know some people were upset that a letter was sent and you were not aware of it or had any input into it. And I wasn't thinking about anything but that I was trying to make the timeline. So I do apologize to the board for doing that. So at this point, I, we can ask, I still think we should ask for it, even though we probably won't need it. But it, it doesn't hurt not to, and plus it'll be so good for me. I won't be so tight worrying about a deadline.
So does that help to answer your question?
So I'm still not clear on, I understood that part. I had some, one, I appreciate the comments that you made.
Thank you.
Because I, you know, the board, it's a board process.
That's right.
So that's what caught me off guard.
And that's why I'm apologizing. It was solely my fault.
No, I appreciate you saying that. I did have some questions about some of the content of the letter. But my, my question was, when did Dr. Lane respond? Because I hadn't seen, was that something that was shared with the full board, what his response was?
I think I, you know, I separately sent an apology myself and that included Mr. Lane's comment.
I missed that. I didn't see that.
That's in that email string.
I didn't see that.
And in fact, I later responded just pointing out that I had asked about, asked Dr. Lane's office back in September about the process and was directed to speak to the head of the Policy Department for the VDOE. And he gave me information, which I shared with the full board then, about the process.
And that was the information that we were following.
But I think that the full board has seen all the emails that were from Dr. Lane because they were part of a string that was forwarded to me. And I think, Ms. Bazin, weren't you in that? It seemed like.
I'm looking at it right now. I initially, I think, had raised, you know, the question about, you know, how the decision came to be. And I do appreciate your comments, Ms. Campson. But I don't see, in looking, I see your, your email, Mr. Cloud. But I don't see any response from Dr. Lane.
Well, Dr. Lane's response was earlier on in the.
I think it was on a separate email, but he says.
I can't, I have no way.
There's, there's no issue with making sure that everybody gets resent.
That's what we're doing now.
But the point is that we have to take official board action in order for that letter to be valid. And so tonight, on the decision discussion portion of the agenda, there is a motion that Mr. Cloud has, has written that is very much in conjunction with the law so that we can have this letter officially as our, as, as our decision from the board. That, that's the, that's the point. That's the point of it.
That's a certified vote is what he said.
There's that.
The idea is that the vote, the board would vote on whether or not to ask for the extension.
Right. And I would support us to do that.
If you choose not to, then you'll have a hundred and eighty days within which to hire the superintendent from whenever Dr. Booth's official exit was.
And we won't need a hundred and eighty days, but might, we might, we'll not have to rush it so much at the, you know, background check and all that kind of stuff going on.
And then with the extension, we can get a total of three hundred days.
Three hundred and sixty days.
Three hundred and sixty days.
And I forwarded a response because I had to ask, the statute is badly written. So when I read it, I couldn't fully understand it. And I had to get an opinion from the VDOE back in September, which I shared with everybody that, that the extension is in addition to the original one hundred and eighty so that it is three hundred and sixty days then, that you have within which to hire a superintendent from the date of the exit of your previous.
So to follow up on, okay.
Yeah, and then Mr. Jordan, and then we have fifteen minutes until the work session.
Okay, so to follow up on that, I think what would make me more comfortable is that we don't then, I know we all say we don't want to prolong this process either, but, you know, I'd like to, you know, come together and make a decision sooner rather than later.
Yes.
You know, I mean, I think there, I'm hearing that agreement, but that's, I have a concern that, I have a concern about that.
And I think we can address that on December the fourth.
And I, and look at December twentieth to have a meeting.
Well, I, I, I have a very significant work conflict at that time. And so I was able to come out of work on the nineteenth, but the twentieth is very difficult.
We could also look at, you know, Jan, January second or third. I don't think school starts again until the sixth.
Well, hold on, hold on, I don't, I don't, this is what I want to make sure that we are in complete understanding of. On December the fourth, there are several decisions that we're going to have to make. We're going to be choosing the finalist. We're going to have to make an announcement of the meeting. And if we need to make a series of announcements, we need to make a series of announcements. We have to be all prepared for that. But what we really have to determine is the interview dates.
Well, we don't want, the whole point of this is not to determine them now.
No, we need to determine them for our schedules.
Then why keep, if you're keeping confidential the names of the finalists and then you announce that you're having the interviews on Tuesday, the twenty second, or whatever those days are, then all anyone has to do is sit right here and you've announced so much for confidentiality. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm going with the will of the board here. Y'all want it confidential, then I'm just letting you know. You're not going to have confidentiality if you do that.
No, 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 I think, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think there's a little bit of confusion that's, that's there. I, I just want to make sure that we know what dates we need to have blocked off for interviews. And then, once we finish with the interviews, you're telling us that once we ask for our extension, we can come back and make a final decision or announcement at some point.
After winter holidays are over.
After, after the winter holidays. Okay.
I was going to be in Europe.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not.
When are you going to Europe?
Yeah, but, 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 so I think that it's important for us to know what our schedules are so that way we can be prepared to make that decision when we come back.
On the fourth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to make it on, yeah, we'd have to make it.
On the fourth of.
December.
We're talking about our calendar alignment on the fourth of December.
Because we certainly want every single person that's on the board to be involved in that selection.
That's right.
We need to be sure that happens.
And the announcement.
Well, you won't, you don't announce it, you don't announce it the day you do the interview.
No, 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 no.
Even the day you make the decision.
Right.
Because you've still got the negotiations and all that stuff to do.
Right, exactly.
Can I ask one question just to be sure I'm clear? Because I, I'm assuming that I'll write it. You are planning to make the announcement that you're going to hold a meeting within fifteen days to interview applicants on the December fourth.
Yes.
Correct?
That is correct.
I mean, does it have to be verbal?
Yes. It has to be a public announcement. And frankly, because I wasn't involved in what was done previously, I would suggest that I draft a resolution for you all that mirrors what the statute says essentially, that we are going to hold an announce, you know, a meeting to interview candidates for the superintendent's position within fifteen days from this date.
Right, without specifying.
And then you can vote on it and there's a paper record that is there, you know, clearly from that meeting.
And then we can also announce a second meeting if we decide ahead that we don't want to do. Maybe we've got four finalists. We'd never get all those done.
Well, I don't think you can do it all at, at the same date.
Didn't you say we had to make an announcement?
You have to, you make an announcement that you're going to hold a meeting within fifteen days.
Right, yeah.
And then you hold that meeting within fifteen days.
And so that means that that meeting would have to be one meeting followed by each candidate doing the interview one after the other.
It's for one meeting, yes.
Okay.
One consecutive meeting, so no adjournment, no any of that. You know, we can do a brief recess and then come back, bathroom breaks and stuff.
I hope we're doing today.
It's essentially, it's a closed meeting.
Yeah, it's a closed meeting.
It's a continuing closed meeting. That'll all happen.
Alternate location.
Yes.
And I would like to see us do it all on the one day so that I can plan accordingly.
I think it'd be okay if we have three finalists. If we go to four, it might be tough.
Two hours.
So I agree. One day, knock it out.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's, are we all good? Mr. Jordan?
No, no, I'm not. We've had multiple discussions, so I'm just admitting to you, I'm lost. So at one point, we were talking about the extension. Then we started talking about dates and then we were talking about announcements. So just kind of working backwards from the last thing I heard. You know, we don't have to do our interviews on a workday. We can do our interviews on any day of the week. So when we talk about aligning calendars, I just want folks to know, if we wanted to do it on a Sunday, we can do it on a, on a Sunday. It does not have to be on a, on a, on a busy day.
Sundays are my business day, but yes, go ahead.
My point is, is that we are not limited to particular days of the week.
Yes, absolutely.
If, if, if I'm hearing that there are going to be some school board members who are going to be out of town and on a particular period of time, I think we don't need, so we need to have those public dates announced in this meeting.
No.
But I think it's important that we know that because we are, we do want everybody to, to be there, correct?
That is correct. And I think we can do that through some email, right?
And then as far as, I think that the, the candidates and the candidate pool should drive everything. So if we, I don't think we should arbitrarily say we're going to have X number of finalists, arbitrarily say we're going to interview Y number of folks on a particular day. I think we know going into this process that we're going to have to set some time aside to make sure that, however much time do we think that we need to make a good selection, that we, that we do that. So, so I want to put that out there because going to Mr. Cloud's point, just like today, I mean, doing twelve hour days are tough. And I think it would be unfair to some candidates that if, let's say, for some reason we decide to do six and you're the sixth candidate after a long day, I'm not sure that's necessarily fair because everybody can be fresh. And then the, and then the last thing is, my understanding, Attorney Cloud, my understanding of the extension is that it says up to a hundred and eighty. Is that correct?
You can always ask for less.
Right, so if we can get a, some clarity on what time, on this timeline, I think it is better for us if we're asking, if we're going to ask for an extension, to be clear and say whether it's thirty days or whatever and not ask for a hundred and eighty days. I think asking.
I don't think there's any choice. It has to be a hundred and eighty days.
No, it says up to.
It does. It can be.
It says, I'm giving you my.
Yeah, go ahead.
My input that I don't think it is, I don't think that it looks good for us to just say for a backup plan, we're going to ask for a hundred and eighty days. I think the, the real intent. I think the, the real intent, I'm not an attorney, but the real, the real intent behind this whole process is, we're keeping the state board apprised of our process, they know that we are diligently working on it, um, they see the work that we're, that we're doing. So, to me, once I get a better sense of the, the schedule, I think if we feel we're gonna ask for thirty days, that, that seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Asking for a hundred and eighty days, I don't think seems, seems reasonable.
And I don't have any trouble, any problem with that, it was, I thought that Mr. Cloud almost misunderstood, you told me that it was, that if you ask for an extension, it's automatic, a hundred and eighty. I mis, I misunderstood you.
No, it's up to, and a hundred and eighty days, you never had to do it within a hundred and eighty, you could do it in sixty.
Could've done it in a week, right.
That's just an outside deadline, and what you're asking for is an extension of the outside deadline. So, if you want to ask for thirty days, which would give you two hundred and ten days, you can do so.
That sounds good.
Now, that sounds like something I did, and that's what I was questioning.
Up to a hundred and eighty days, you can't ask for more than...
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought he said it's a hundred and eighty.
I, I still think that, I still think that we need to have, I would not go with thirty, I would go with more than thirty, just with contract negotiations and whatnot, and I'm not saying that our goal is to push it out to, you know, sixty, but I would feel more comfortable if we just give ourselves the extra time, uh, because otherwise, we, once we ask for it, do we go back and ask for it again?
And the deadline, no, there is, you can ask for, you ask for one, and it's granted, and that's it, and the deadline means, after that point, then the state can appoint your superintendent for you.
That's right, so I just, I just think it's...
Not necessarily that they're eager to do that, but it, the statute authorizes them to tell you who your superintendent will be, and you will have no choice.
Hmm, I, what, what I've heard in our conversations, which I really appreciate, is, let's not box ourselves in, let's not, let's not, you know, be prescriptive, and now I hear us saying, "We want to be prescriptive."
No, that's not what we're saying.
Saying...
But, but you are prescribing, if you say the thirty days, you are prescribing that we have up until this thirty-day point in order to make a decision.
Well, I think at some point, we have to make a decision.
We do, we do.
I mean...
Well, I don't want to...
That's accountable.
My, my, I'm just, my point was, we, we've known from the beginning that we had a hundred and eighty.
Right.
All I'm saying is, is that based upon what I've heard, pending any other additional information, I haven't heard anything that suggests that we need another a hundred and eighty days. What I thought I heard was, uh, Ms. Campson has laid out this, uh, very good timeline for us, we've set a goal of trying to, uh, make a decision no later than January, uh, if not sooner, so I don't see, I don't see anything that has, that is standing in the way of us meeting the original timeline, but if we're gonna ask the state for an extension, I'm saying you ask the state for an extension of additional thirty days, that gives us through, through January, and I don't see any reason, this, this, right, why we would need any more than that, in order to make a decision, negotiate a contract, that's my point.
Here.
Okay.
This is the extended...
I mean, 'cause I...
Right here, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but...
I don't see the harm in just getting the maximum, just in case we, I like to err on the caution of, if it's available for us, get the maximum, so that we run into any situation, because we may run into a situation where, just hypothetically, every candidate pulls out, they decide they don't want to, and then we have to start over, but that way, we've already asked for it, and I'm just, not saying that it will, I just err on the caution of, if we have it and it's available, we don't have to use it all, but if we have it, it's in place.
What if something happens to a board member, you know, a health situation, and...
They fall and crack their head like that?
And, and we all can't meet, we all can't meet. I mean, I'm just thinking to ourselves, I know that a, all of us have the will, the will to get this job done, but once we close the door on this extension, it's closed, as Mr. Cloud has just said. So, I just want us to un, fully understand that. I don't support asking for, I want to ask for every bit of time that we have, and just know that we have the will to say, "We will get this job done." This is, just because we accept a hundred and eighty days, doesn't mean that we're gonna be, um, taking our time to do this.
So, do, I'm sorry.
Oh, so I should just, uh, share my question, I just asked, uh, Ms. Campson, so, on the Fourth, um, is it possible to revisit this discussion then? Does it have to be determined right now? I mean, on the Fourth, what if we have, like, amazing stellar candidates, you know? I think it should be driven by, as Mr. Jordan said earlier, the, the candidate pool, and if we, you know, whether it's thirty days, sixty days, I, I'm reluctant, unless I said that made me more comfortable to say, you know, uh, that we're requesting extension for a certain period of time, but to go a whole other hundred, extra, a hundred and eighty days...
So, let me put you into my shoes for a second, okay? There's a lot of time that goes into emails, composing letters, asking for things, um, I want us to make a decision. I, I think that, um, whether we ask for it today, or whether we ask for it on the Fourth, I honestly don't know if, if we ask for it on the Fourth, if we're still in that, that boundary of when we can ask for it, but I know that there is a motion that is prepared for tonight, that asks for a letter that Dr. Lane has already received, and it just says, "We're asking for a hundred and eighty days." I don't think that that impacts our decision on the candidates or, or any of that, it just gives us the breathing room that we need in order to, um, feel comfortable that we can do the work that we need to do in order to get the interviews and things done. So, I, I honestly don't want to drag it on anymore.
I don't want to drag it either. I, listen, we need to start...
Yeah.
Making decisions and moving on.
So, can we just, 'cause I think we've exhausted a lot of time around it, just to, do you like what we did with the last item? Let's just put a motion on the floor.
There's a motion already on the, on the thing, we can pull it up right now, if we wanted to.
Is it put on the agenda?
It is on the agenda for tonight.
Let's just...
And it is written for a hundred and eighty days, it could be changed to some, some...
I could amend it on the floor, but I, I think a hundred and eighty.
Sixty, I mean, I just think we're getting too far.
Could we take a straw vote and get something?
Again, like I said, I'm not disputing anybody else, I don't think that we slow down, but if it's the only shot that we have to ask for an extension, we ask for the maximum, and shoot to make it shorter, and do what we need to do.
Oh, not just shoot, we will make it shorter.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, but I mean, I just air back to what Ms. Bazin said, I mean, if we get into a situation, and, just, I'm just thinking hypothetically, we have to start all over, because we don't have a good candidate, or somebody pulls out that we thought, then we've got to start over.
Mm-hmm.
And being able to maximize the amount of time that we have to get it right, I want to make sure that we have the time to get it right.
Yep, so...
So, let's decide that, and then we can make that, so we can sort of the resolutions for tonight.
Right, I mean, we could vote on it right now, if you all wanted to, but it's two o'clock, and...
It's on the agenda.
Decide on the time.
Everybody else is out there, too.
I think everyone's in agreement with an extension.
Okay.
Why don't we just go with sixty days, or a hundred and eighty, or something?
Uh-huh, okay.
Well, that's what's on the agenda.
Ms. Bazin, what do you say?